So let's call the Township of Warminster Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, October 15th to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was no flag on the screen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave servicemen and public servants overseas and here. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we can start with announcements. Residents can send public comment to publiccomment@warminsterpa.org. Or they can now come to the Township Building to participate virtually. We're still working on ways to make this easier. I also understand, you know, we've been hearing from the health professionals that the, you know, COVID is increasing a little bit, so we want to be absolutely certain that our residents are safe and healthy. So I have one other comment if I may. A little lengthy, but I just wanted to let everyone know that some of the voting polling places have changed. District 1 and 17 used to vote at Archbishop Wood. Now they'll be voting at the library at 1076 Emma Lane. District 5, Mark, I believe you're still, we're still at McDonald's.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, and District 13 used to vote at Hart School Farm Company. They will now go to Willigale Elementary at 720 Norris Town Road. District 14, who used to vote in Ann's Choice, will now also be voting at McDonald Elementary School. What is that? 666 Reeves Lane, I believe. I don't think I missed anything there. Just let me check quickly. Nope, that's it. So that's all I have for now. Mr. McKee?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few announcements. Number one, I just want to send my condolences out to the Keahan family, Joe Keahan and Tommy Keahan. Joe's our rec. Constable here in Warminster, the passing of their brother Mickey. Mickey was a special needs guy, but he was a real special guy too, and he'll be sorely missed by his family. It was a really heck of a guy, so. I want to send my condolences out to them. I also want to congratulate Ms. Whitney because she's tuned in here tonight on a successful golf outing on Monday. Seventy-five golfers braved that weather on Monday. I, myself and Mr. Kennard, we declined to go out in the weather. We're not that tough, right? Right, Craig? We didn't play, but seventy-five people did play and they put lunch out and they, I think Karen said they had a hundred and some people signed up to play, so it was a successful outing despite the weather, so. Good job by Karen and company for putting that together. I want to also wish luck to the people, the new proprietors at the Blue Bar down on York Road. I was there for their grand opening on Saturday. It's a former Fritz's next to Waltemont's. A young Warminster couple purchased it, redid the place, put a real nice sandwich menu in. And I want to wish them luck, you know, in this time of COVID, opening a business like that is not easy. But they did a really nice job and I wish them success. And the last one, I want to thank the Ben Wilson Center. I was over there today to get a drive up to the shop. It was in and out in five minutes. It worked out really well, so I want to thank them for putting that on. It was really nice. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're welcome. Kathy?
Oh, hi.
You just muted. Unmute your speaker, Kathy.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair, I have a comment to make. I'd like to piggyback on what you had originally had said. We are following the CDC guidelines to protect our residents, our staff, employees, as well as ourselves, and if there was any way we could be there, we certainly would. But with like Ken had said, with the increase in cases and all that, we are following the CDC guidelines at this time. And that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, Mary?
Evening, everybody. I just wanted to remind everybody that Monday coming up, October 19th, is the last day to register to vote. There is a National Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, October 24th. You can go to FDA.gov to get information in regards to that. We also do have a permanent location inside of our Warminster Police Department at 401 Gibson Avenue, if anybody had any old drugs to get rid of. That is it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. And finally, Judy?
Well, I just want to say the other, the other place for the drop off for the drugs is at the ShopRite that day on October, was it? Twenty-fifth? Mary?
Saturday, October 24th.
Yeah, 24th. The ShopRite's another location, and always the right aid. So I just wanted to say that the Ben Wilson Center can still use your donations. They're hurting a lot because of the COVID and the lack of attendance, and they're trying to do as much as they can, and they're doing a pretty good job. And I wanted to announce too that the Warminster Police Benevolent Association is having a fundraiser for the benefit of a young man, Officer Andy Witt, who has developed a very serious condition and definitely needs funds for him himself and his family, and they are conducting a fundraiser. You can send it. Make the checkout to the Warminster Police Benevolent Association, mark on it to the benefit of Andy Witt, and you can bring it right here to the Township Office and give it to Catherine McGovern, and she'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. And just one last thing, when the voting changes, you can go to, for more information, you can go to www.buckscounty.org. Click on the government link and then go to the Board of Elections. All the information will be there. Or you can call 215-348-6154. Okay, so I don't believe there's any presentations at this moment, correct?
Correct. No presentations, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we can go directly to Land Use Matters, and I will hand this conditional use 2020-02 for York Road. I'll turn that over to our solicitor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Is the, are we set to go, Amanda?
Yeah, John, please turn your camera on right now. You're ready. It's your turn.
Okay, here you go.
Yes. All right, this is a conditional use hearing, 2020-02. It is a conditional use application for 40 York Road. The conditional use, the property is in a C1 zoning district, and the requested use, I'm going to check if the number is correct, is for motor vehicle sales, use 51. Again, it's permitted as a conditional use. Section 27-1200C of the zoning ordinance. I believe the applicant is here, Mr. Kevolos, are you prepared to talk about your application?
Yes.
All right, I will turn it over to you, and let me explain what your plans are for your property.
Okay, well, basically what I did is I bought the property on York Road, 40 York Road, and we reh- rehabbed the building and all that stuff. It was automotive-related and retail zoning before for auto parts and things of that nature. I have a dealer's license in Warminster right now, but I'm in the industrial park and it's an rented location. So we bought this property because it's got some frontage out front, and I wanted to move my license or my dealer's license to a more permanent location. I'm renting in the back in the industrial park, and this location came available, and I wanted to move the license over there. I'm not looking to have a, you know, thirty-five cars or anything like that. I want to put a few cars out front and operate a little bit of repair work out of the back and piggyback some of the work from my other shop. Take the pressure off of the neighborhood that I'm working in now. And just continue in that direction, you know? You have any other questions?
I have a few, just to continue with the process, and then we can turn it over to the board for questions. You appeared in front of the zoning hearing board last requesting variances. Can you go into those a little bit, please?
Yeah, I asked for an additional to do car sales and leasing rental under the conditional use was for the auto sales and the leasing portion of it is a part of what I understood it to be would be normal, you could use that in there, but they also named it in the, in my request, so it would be upfront. Everyone knew what we were doing.
And you're planning to do, in relation to this variance, you would also ask to be able to do servicing of vehicles on the site as well, is that correct?
It is, it is also, it already had zoning for auto sales and retail. And alls I was trying to do was get the, to add the zoning for the sales use. So I could sell, you know, a car or whatever out front, where I wasn't doing it illegally. A lot of people in the township are selling cars all over parking lots and stuff. And it's not really done legally, but since I have a license, I wanted to have the opportunity to sell.
And the zoning hearing board, thank you for that, and the zoning hearing board granted your request, is that correct?
Yes, they did.
And they did apply four conditions to their grant of the variance, and you're prepared to move those conditions, correct?
Yeah, we, we met every one of them. I had to, you had to put some signs up designating, lining the property, designating customer parking spaces and whatnot, which I did.
In that case, I have no further questions. I can turn it over to the board for their questions and comments at this time, Mr. Chair.
I have a quick, quick question for, well, actually a comment for John. John, I don't see any problem with your variances, and you've always, you're a great businessman to Warminster. You do a great job. You maintain your property. You follow the rules, and I don't have any problem with that. I'm thinking that, you know, you agreed to what the zoning offered with the conditions, and I'm totally okay with that.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
Thank you too, and you too as well.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, John, welcome to the Hollywood Squares, by the way. I couldn't agree with, I couldn't agree with Ms. Fresketor anymore. John's a great community guy and did a terrific job with that building too. The building was a bit of a dump, and I've been in there. He did a beautiful job rehabbing that building, too. So if you're granted this use, John, I wish you a lot of luck there.
Yeah, I hope I make it. You know, it's very tough to do what I'm doing right now. You know, the last, you know, bunch of months, we actually did the settlement in a barn during COVID. They didn't have a regular settlement, so we did it that way. It just was, the whole process was difficult, you know, from the beginning. I had a mortgage. They turned around and they canceled the mortgage. I had to borrow money a different way. Put some property up and leveraged property to get the loan, and now I'm in the process of getting another mortgage for the property. So it's been a lot of unusual twists and turns. It hasn't been easy this round. I've done this stuff before. This one's been a little, a little more different, but I'm hoping the, I'm hoping everything works out, and I believe that cleaning that neighborhood up back there, like a lot of positive feedback from the neighborhood. It was a real dump, and there was a lot of trash back there as usual, just like when I did Warminster Auto Body. I cleaned that place up, that place out there forty years with garbage and trash out back, and nobody complained about it, and I don't understand why, but I like to run a clean operation. I try to do the best I can with what I got, and I did a nice job with it, and I know the neighbors are all complimenting, because I know people that live back there, and they sent a message to me that way, so. Should work out. I think we should be fine.
So, John, I do commend you for opening up a business in this, you know, in this environment, because it's very, very difficult. So I commend you for that, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I know we talked about when you were going through this. You know, when you were purchasing the building, you're, you're going to hire additional people. You know, you are one person in Warminster that does hire a lot of local people, and I commend you for that as well. So this should add to, this should add to the, to the roles of employee to Warminster, correct?
The mechanic is a neighbor, lives on, I think, Fourth or Fifth Street back there. I'm going to bring him in. We were just kind of waiting until the end of the holidays, because I told them to wait. He'll come in and work that. I'm going to bring Pete Rothin, who's a neighbor, over in the Speedway section. He's seventy-four and is kind of retired, but wants to come back to work and has a lot of experience in the car business, worked for O'Neil and Shipe and things like that, so I'll have the experience behind me to get it open, and hopefully I'll get the best shot I can, and you know, I always try to hire local people, and from the township, I try to as much as I can. And the people I do have, I keep for a long time. We tend to, we tend to keep them, so.
Well, that says something to your, your, your business.
Yeah, I'm committed to the township and the community. I've been living here. I bought my house in nineteen eighty-eight here in Joseph Avenue, but I also lived in the apartments and stuff before that. So I'm a lifelong resident here in Warminster and started my first company on County Line and Street Road in nineteen eighty-four, and then moved to York and Street Road before the Sunoco Mini-Mart came in. I had that gas station there. And had operated that for a few years, and then things changed. They wanted me to change it over to sell hot dogs in Mini-Mart. Now it really wasn't my key. So I ended up moving down the street and moved around a few times until I could get settled. You know, you know, I was always renting, which always made it difficult, because when somebody changed the lease or things happened, you'd have to start all over again. So I had many times that it happened to me. But now I'm in a little different position to purchase, so hopefully I can be in a more permanent position for the township and the residents, and then be able to better serve them that way. Especially being out front of any industrial park, nobody really knows that I'm back there, so. If I come out out front a little bit and people can see the activity and come in and get work done, you know, maybe we can help the community a little bit better that way. The kind of cars that I want to sell, I might, I'm going to sell some nicer cars, but I'm going to try to target the five thousand and under market for the people in the neighborhood who can't afford vehicles. You know, that can't afford a ten thousand or fifteen or twenty thousand dollar vehicle. And then we have some leasing options for, ideas for leasing options to, it's more like a kind of a rent-to-own type thing, where you lease the vehicle because they may not have good credit, so they lease it, and then pay the lease off in the last payment. They buy it out for a dollar and they own the vehicle. So there's some ideas there that I want to throw around and give it a go with. And I think I can help some of the people that are struggling a little bit in the township as well. And I know what it's like to struggle. I've been there myself, so. I want to try, I want to try to do some good there in that department, maybe turn it a little bit and help some people along the way.
Well, thank you. Appreciate all your, all your effort. That's fantastic. So any other comments or questions? Okay, so I guess with that, we'll need a motion to...
Mr. Chair, at this time, it's a public hearing, so at this time we have to open for the comment.
Okay.
There's members of the public at this time who have some comments or questions, or seeking party status. They can be entertained at this time.
Mr. Chairman, we have no emailed public comments on this topic.
There is no one in the room that appears ready to speak on this topic.
Okay. So with that, I guess, what would be the motion, Scott?
The motion is, you would just need a motion to either, however you decide, either to approve or disapprove of the conditional use request for 40 York Road.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there a motion to disapprove? Being none, I guess we'll call the question, the motion to approve the conditional use. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Congratulations, John. We wish you all the best.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing you live someday. It's a little different, a little different than normal. I've actually had the opportunity to use a bunch of different different accounts. I did the Zoom. I did Google yesterday, and I guess YouTube today, and a couple, another one, so. They're all kind of the same. They all work, and it seems like everybody seems to get in a groove a little bit with them, but it is different, that's for sure.
It certainly is.
All right, you guys take care and thank you, and I'll watch you on TV.
It's not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, so second Land Use Matters, public hearings and ordinances, the Warminster Community Park Project, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Schuster.
First, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the previous meeting, if you recall, you did approve the conditional awarding of both of the bids associated with this project. This project is covered by the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, so your motion was to approve the low bidder contingent upon completion, a successful completion of the ordinance process. And then if that did not work out, they go to the next lowest bidder and then the next lowest bidder. So that process was conducted. We did do a review of each bidder, and the conclusion was for both of these bids that all of the lower bids, the two lower ones for DCNR and the lowest one for RACP, were not qualified for a number of reasons under the Responsible Contractor Ordinance. The lone bidder that was found to be qualified on both bids was NICO. Accordingly, it's our recommendation to award both bids by separate actions to NICO. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to discuss it, but again, this is a process that was done in accordance with the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, and the two, the lowest bidders were disqualified for not meeting the requirements of that ordinance.
Okay, so is there a motion to award the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, we still have a public comment that has been received, so you certainly could make the motion now. Just please don't take action prior to the public comment.
Yes, yes, I understand. So usually we make a motion, and then there's public comment. That's always been the standard, so. Okay, so is there a motion to award bid 2019-11 DCNR and 2019-12 the RACP to award those contracts to NICO?
I'll make the question. I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so I guess we can open it up to public comment, or we can have comment from the board first?
Whichever you prefer, Mr. Chairman.
Let's just, let's have the public comment right now.
Okay, and just to clarify, that motion was to approve both bids, DCNR and the RACP, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to read the public comments that I've received, and then we'll switch over to the meeting room. First is from Chris Beilich. Pardon me if I butchered your last name. My name is Chris Beilich, owner of CDU Stormwater Maintenance and Management Systems LLC, and just want to express my concerns on the Township RCO. I cannot be happier that this is in place as long as the requirements are met and all contractors are held accountable. Those who do not comply should not be able to be in the bidding process, and if they falsely info on the bid documents, they should be banned for three years bidding work. I personally have received, have not received much work in Warminster Township, and I did some jobs, and I know it is apples for apples, union or non-union, does not matter. It is fair contracting. Thank you for installing this. The next comment, excuse me, I got mixed up here. I, James Hopkins, live at 1222 Nassau Road in Warminster, and I support the RCO for the Warminster Park Project. Next one, I, Zach Kazer, live at 1516 Tarleton Place, Warminster, PA 18974, and I support the RCO for the Warminster Park Project. Next is, hello, my name is Duncan Lammchek. I'd like to take the time to express how the ROC of this township is important and should remain as is. One of the obvious reasons is the comfort of knowing the job is getting done right. I don't want my money going towards a job where I think the workers there will cut corners, just so they can get the job done faster. I want good quality work, and I think with the ROC in place, it helps bring in workers that are hardworking and know what their job is and deliver the work that I am paying for. Thank you for your time. The next one is, I, Brendan Tierney, live at 844 Pelham Avenue in Warminster. I support the RCO for the Warminster Park Project. Next is John Tenary, 725 Locust Road. My name is John Tenary Jr., and I'm so glad the Township installed an RCO policy. As a taxpayer of Warminster Township, I know the work to be done will be on time and on budget, provided the contractors comply with the ordinance's requirements, and the ones who lie filling out the pay board should be removed from the Township database to bid future work. Hopefully, the school board will adopt the RCO policy. It will prevent the need for adjustments to completed work. Thank you. The next one is... I already read that one. The next one is Joel Lopez. I, Joel Lopez, live at 485 Maple Street, Warminster, PA 18974, and I support the RCO for the Warminster Park Project. Thank you for your time. Next one is I, Richard Burner. I, Richard Burner, live at 316 Fur Street, Warminster, PA 18974, and I support the RCO for the Warminster Park Project. And the next one is Bill Mahoney. Good evening. My name is Bill Mahoney. I live at 500 Ivyland Road in Warminster for fifteen years. I am a proud member of LU98. On tonight's agenda, I understand they are rewarding the contract for the park. I am for the RCO and the Township Supervisor's decision to uphold the laws that were written in 2009 concerning the RCO. Thank you. And one last check. Nothing else written, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schuster. So I guess we'll go to the, the board of the public comment. Are the contractors that were disqualified actually asked that we not disclose it? actually asked that we not disclose it? I don't, I, I, I'd have to defer to Mr. Schuster.
Uh, one, one second, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I do have that, um. So the difference, uh, based on the alternates selected, uh, for the DCNR, uh, pro- uh, grant funded project would be $68,924 and for RACP, um, would be $205,925.
I, I don't believe so. Um, there were some, there were some things that we removed because the costs were way too high. And, um, so, uh, the, our, our engineer and management and, uh, and Karen worked it out so we could get, um, the biggest bang for our buck. So Greg, before we continue on, um, I, I'm getting some notifications that people cannot hear, um, the people at the public comment.
Uh, I, I've heard that, uh, as well, um, uh, so, and I'm just hearing now from our technical people that that is correct. Uh, we're not sure, and they're not sure of the issues. Uh, so in that case, uh, I guess a question for the solicitor, can we continue the meeting with the technology issues that we're having, uh, right now? Bear in mind that we're not preventing anyone, um, from, um, doing public comment, although people at home can't hear the public comment. Uh, they will, I assume, be able to hear it in a rebroadcast, but is there, should we take a pause here to work on the technical issues or are we okay to continue?
Uh, we could take a pause if you would like, but from the standpoint of legal standpoint, um, the building is open for people and my understanding is everyone else is able to hear, correct? Really? They're able to hear all the people who are on the Zoom call otherwise, the public comment, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So if, if you would like to take one from, from a, uh, if that, i- if you'd like to take one to try and get, that would be okay? But because the building is open and we have the communication system working for the most part, uh, we can work on it as well, but if we'd like to, it's not an issue if we continue forward.
So, Mr. Chairman, would you be okay then, maybe if we just took five minutes to see if we can solve this issue? And if we can't solve it in five minutes, then the press on?
I'm gonna give it a try. Yeah, I would think that we need to take a break to, um,
Can you hear me now?
Actually fix the, to fix the problem, yeah.
All right, so let's, let's go ahead and then take a, a five minute recess if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, five minute recess, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're back on, we're back live?
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Okay, so, uh, let's continue with, uh, the public comment, um, uh, the last two people that spoke, I don't know if they want to, um, readdress the board, but we heard you and it's been recorded.
Sure, come on. Good evening, uh, Bob Welsh, Hollowell Avenue, Warminster, PA. Uh, my question was, why would you accept the most expensive bid? When there's a difference, I believe, of $400,000 between the high bid and low bid? Why would you not make adjustments to this park project so we can save the citizens' money? Good evening, folks, Arno Vorwork, I live at 974 Davisville Road, Warminster. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, I'm a retired Navy commander. I managed $435 million worth of essential service projects in a little city called Baghdad, which you might have heard of the place. Uh, I have an MBA and I'm very well experienced in the worlds of finance. Couple of questions I have. You have rules, you have guidelines, and we have this responsible co- uh, contractor ordinance. There's always availability for waivers, exceptions, and, uh, variances along the lines. Again, kind of tie into what Bob Welsh just talked about. If there's such a huge delta of 200 to $400,000 between high bidder, low bidder, I have experience with Navy contracting. You have sole source providers, which you can make an exception for. Uh, some of the research I just recently looked at, Colonial School District out in Montgomery County has written into their contractor guidelines that there is an opportunity for a waiver if there's a sole source supplier or they're using such a huge differential in the cost of the, of the bids. Uh, I just kind of dumbfounded as to why we didn't look at that option or we didn't go down that road. Thank you. Oh, that way, okay, one-way traffic.
Good evening, my name is Janice Charlton on Lemon Street in Warminster. The question I have for you is this, the park project was funded by grants. Now we are taking a higher bid, cutting the scoop and financing the costs of, to award the higher bid, why? In addition to that, now that you've decided to not take the, accept the first two lower offers because they don't meet the criteria, will we, is there an opportunity for us to seek out other bids and giving them advance notice of the requirement so that that way the bids that we consider meet the criteria prior to wasting their time? Thank you.
Good evening. Tara McSane, 847 Christie Court, Warminster. Uh, and let us we learn this evening that the highest bid was awarded and it's a difference of $269,000. I'm just asking why were there only two bidders on this multimillion dollar park project? Thank you.
And are there any other in-person comments? It appears to be it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, one of the things that I noticed here, um, uh, public comment on this is closed. Uh, one of the things that I've noticed in, in Warminster over the years that I've seen here is that we have ordinances, but we don't enforce them, uh, only when it's convenient. Uh, we hand out waivers like Halloween candy. Um, so this, this ordinance, by the way, um, was adopted in May 2016 and was actually a replacement for the ri- the original RCO. And, um, and it made some changes that everyone seemed to agree with, and by the way, this was a bipartisan appro- this was a four to nothing vote, two Republicans, two Democrats. So, um, you know, Mr. McKee, I believe you were the chair when that happened.
Um, Correct, Mr. Chairman, and I actually spearheaded updating the ordinance at that time.
Yes, so, so again, we, we're not going to get into the reasons why contractors were disqualified. Um, sometimes, uh, you know, contractors, uh, this was rebid once before, which gave everyone an opportunity to see all the numbers and some people, uh, may have, uh, um, revised their numbers way down. Um, but the bottom line is that if you don't meet the requirements of the RCO, you're disqualified. So, um, and there's a lot of reasons for that, because for one, we, we want qualified people to do the work. We want the work done safely and, 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 and in a professional manner. And we don't want to have to redo things, uh, for instance, uh, our high school has some issues. Um, and we don't, we want to avoid all that. So, um, that's, that's, you know, there, there's, there was bipartisan support for this, this RCO. We were going to follow the RCO as it is. It's been there since 2016. And, um, you know, and to quote, um, another, uh, um, another well-respected man, Gene DiGeralamo, uh, Bucks County just enacted an RCO back in March and, uh, I'll quote him, "It's the right thing to do for Bucks County." So w- we, we find, um, we want to have qualified contractors, and by the way, Nico, uh, if you ever want to go see some of their work, go to the park project down in Croydon and have a look at that. And then go to the park project, or I'm not sorry, the park project, but go to the township building in, uh, in Bristol and you're going to see some fabulous work, some well-done, on time, on budget, no change orders, no additional costs. Um, they are fancy, they are beautiful projects. So, uh, I mean, that's about all I have to say about it, so, uh, uh, anyone else? Anyone else? On the board? Okay, s- go, go ahead, Kathy.
Duncan, um, I just don't see any reason, I, I just think it's a big mistake to not follow the letter of the RCO when you have some places that do that and you end up having somebody's cousin or somebody else it leads to. It leads to favoritism, it leads to people getting jobs that aren't necessarily fully qualified and it leads to doing double duty and ending up costing you more in the end. And I think it's the right thing to do. And that's why I, I made the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a comment. I believe, uh, I'd like to, uh, emphasize and, and ditto to everything you just said about why we have ordinances in place to protect the township. If you remember, our old Williamson High School had structural damage that was unsafe for our students. I remember that. And we couldn't do anything with the contractor that, that did it originally. So I feel when, um, our last board, like you said, it was a bipartisan vote. I voted for it, Mr. Monroe voted for it, Mr. McKee and Mr. Crowley, I believe. And it is the right thing for the township and, uh, thank you for your comments, too.
Call the question?
Okay, so, uh, no other comments? So with that, let's, let's call the question, Kathy?
Aye.
Uh, Mark?
Chairman, with, with the comment that I fully support the RCO, I spoke in favor of it in 2009 before I was a board member here when it was adopted. I'm a 36-year member of the Building Trades and couldn't support them more. Reason I'm voting though on this, though, is we're, we're, we're passing along additional cost here to the residents, whether it be for bid process, which it was, and I didn't like the optic that we only got three bidders on a project like this. We should have had at least three more. And I, I don't like the, the exploding engineering costs. The original cost of this was supposed to be in the neighborhood of 200 to 250,000 to the residents. It's far exceeding that now and we're going to wrap this up and bundle it into a loan and pass the cost on to the township residents and in the current situation, the townships, and I just can't support that. So I, I, I'm a no, Mr. Chairman, respectfully.
Okay, uh, Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so the motion carries four one. Um, and, um, you know, we have a very responsible contractor, does fantastic work and, um, maybe they'll bring it in a couple hundred thousand dollars on.
Take you out to play golf if he does, Ken.
Yeah, okay, you got a deal. Okay, next up on the agenda, Shenandoah Woods purchase. Mr. Schuster?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sch- Sherman. Um, two items for you to consider under this, uh, particular agenda topic. Uh, going back a couple of years ago, the prior board, uh, did enter in a purchase and sale agreement with the United States Navy to acquire Shenandoah Woods. Uh, all the paperwork, uh, all the legal stuff has been done, uh, to move forward with that. And, uh, and just to be clear, it's not directly us that is purchasing this. It would be the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority purchasing on our behalf through a straw party agreement that's in place. Uh, they would then go ahead and, uh, clean up the property, uh, which entails removing the buildings uh, and, uh, removing, uh, some other features, leaving most of the roads, uh, in place though so that the property can be serviced. It would originally, uh, or initially be open space. Uh, it can be converted to recreational space, but there are certainly no plans to go ahead and do that. Uh, the prior board, uh, did feel that this was a, a, a good move for the township to preserve one of the last big pieces of open space and there was also the fear of development of this piece into a high, uh, high-density development, uh, which we wanted to avoid for a number of reasons. Uh, that's, uh, some of the reasons why the prior board did, uh, engage in this, uh, purchase and sale agreement. It was not, uh, before and on, it didn't close for a couple of reasons. Obviously we've been slowed down by the pandemic, uh, but perhaps the biggest reason was that, uh, there was a claim from the Aldi Foundation, uh, that had a, uh, pre-existing agreement for when a developer was supposed to come in, uh, that did think, uh, they claimed they were entitled, uh, to, uh, portion of the, either land or proceeds. Uh, they did file various court actions, um, through negotiations between our solicitor and their attorneys. Uh, they have, uh, negotiated a settlement to that agreement. Uh, and that would be the last thing holding us up. So the first action, uh, for the board, uh, would be to authorize the staff and professionals uh, to move forward with the closing of the property and the, uh, cleanup of the property as well. Uh, we really don't need any formal legal, um, action, uh, because all the agreements are in place. However, it has been some time and it was the prior board that took this action, so we thought it wise to come before you and just be crystal clear that you're all okay moving forward, uh, with the process.
So there's no action that we need to take on this?
Well, either by consensus or by, by motion, uh, I would appreciate the board, uh, authorizing us to move forward.
So, uh, this was all, um, put together a couple of years ago, about two and a half years ago, I believe. The, the, the agreements, the negotiations with Aldi. Um, so this, this agreement was in place, um, long before this board took, um, their oath. So, uh, I guess we could do it by consensus considering that there's no action that needs to be done?
I, I, I'm fine with that as long as the board is clear that there's no objections with us moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, if I'd be allowed to just give a brief history of how we came to the conclusion to do this purchase, the previous board?
Certainly.
Yeah, the, the, this had gone on for years and years. I mean, we, we, the board, and I think every resident of Warminster feels that we should be given this property by the Navy not to have to purchase it. But unfortunately, the property, we had an independent study done on that property. That property is not contaminated and the report's available here at the township building. Uh, Ken, I'm sure you reviewed it during the business.
I have.
Um, so at one point, the Navy came to us and said, "You have 30 days to purchase this property or we're going to put it on the open market." The board got together quickly and took decisive action because we were afraid of a high-density housing project in there that would increase our police costs, put a burden on our schools and the possibility of future contamination that we're not aware of right now. So that's why the previous board moved forward with this action, that was right.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand, Mark, and I did review that, um, that report and, uh, and I looked at, that and all the other reports, there's thousands and thousands of pages and thousands of, uh, pages of laboratory data. Um, and, uh, and I, I don't disagree, uh, their conclusions were, were, were accurate for the samples that were taken. Um, and, you know, when I was on the, uh, um, the EAC, we thought this would be a great project as well to take, for the township to take over because it's contiguous with the park. We, you can turn that into all kinds of walking trails, um, you know, it, it has potential to be enhanced. You know, it has potential to be, enhance the park even more than the park is now. So we were in full support of it and I still am.
I only wish the Navy would have saw their way to giving it to us for a dollar instead of making us pay this absurd amount for it. Unfortunately, but they put a gun to our heads. They really did.
So we've been, we spoke with our senators and local reps as well. And I think, you know, I know there's a lot of, well, not a lot, but there's a handful of people that don't feel we should do, move forward with this. That should be directed towards your senators, your representative, your House of Representatives, your state representatives and senators. The township residents should be directing their focus to them because that's who they listen to. You know, myself and a handful of people go over and talk to them as representatives of the township. They just go, "Okay, well, here's some options and we'll talk about it." But if the residents of Warminster would have, over the last three years or four years, been very, very vocal to our senators in Washington, then maybe we would have gotten it for a dollar. Or maybe we would have gotten it for nothing. So, you know, it speaks volumes for speaking out to your representatives, to your elected officials, and not just the local ones to complain about something, but to speak to your representatives in Washington and to get something done. Because if the entire township would have wrote a letter or called them, I guarantee we would have got that for nothing. But two, three people, yourself, me, and Mary and Judy in the previous board, that's a handful of people. So, you know, here we are. I still think it's a great opportunity to enhance the park and it'll be well worth the money you spend.
Good point, Mr. Chair, and I have no objection. I am totally for the project.
So how do we go about just giving consent? Just a thumbs up?
Honestly, if there's no, it does appear that there's any objection. So if the solicitor is satisfied that that is enough to move forward with the existing purchase and sale agreement, then we can move forward. So then we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the settlement agreement with the Aldi Foundation as negotiated by our solicitor. This does permanently end any and all claims they have against us for the property, whether it be for the taking of a section of the property or for any finances that they are due. The settlement amount, if I recall correctly, is $175,000, the payment of which would be financed through the debt service, which is in the next agenda item.
And so let's go back to the, Scott, are you okay with how we move forward on the consent for the closing on Shenandoah?
Yeah, sorry about that. I had a trouble getting, yeah, we were fine. Like Mr. Schuster said, there was no actual action required at this time. It was more of a discussion and getting forward action. So we're good to go with the last agenda item.
Okay. Now, moving forward with the Aldi Foundation, I guess we'll need a motion for approval of the settlement agreement?
That would be correct.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I make a motion that we move forward.
Okay. So originally, the Aldi Foundation was asking for substantially more money. And we're actually happy that, we felt that it was, it wasn't a valid number. So we asked our solicitor to go back to them and I'm happy that it didn't. It was, it had been drug out, I believe, Kathy or Mark, correct me if I'm wrong. But this is another thing that's been drug out for years and years and years. So at least we're moving forward and getting these things, all these pieces in place to enhance the park. So, well, any other comments?
Before we open it up, Mr. Hayes, may I say something?
Yes.
Just want to say, yeah, this was something that we negotiated with Aldi back in March, actually. And they have been more than willing with us to work through this pandemic. Obviously, the pandemic threw the township through a loop. So they've been very gracious in working with us and are very happy that they're willing to continue with this. And we're going to get this resolved now.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, is this open to public comment, this action item?
I believe so, yes. Does any other board members have any comments? Okay, so I guess we'll go to the email first, Greg?
Mr. Chairman, there are no emailed comments on this at the top.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mike Virus, 948 Cornell Drive. I just have a few questions. Actually, one of them you just answered, so I don't need to ask that. What is the actual, I didn't, you said it already, I apologize, I didn't hear it. But what's the actual cost of that property? Just the cost for the sale of Shenandoah Woods?
I don't quite understand the question, Mike.
Shenandoah Woods project? What's the actual cost for that property?
The cost for what?
Shenandoah Woods.
I believe it's a million dollar, correct, Mr. Schuster?
So there were two questions in there. The cost for the property is, in fact, $1 million. There is going to be some cleanup cost, which we don't know the final number on until it goes out to bid. But $1 million is the purchase price.
Yeah, that was my second question. Do we, we don't know what the cost for knocking that, clearing that down and fixing the?
No, it hasn't gone out to bid. We do have some estimates from the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority.
Okay, and that'll be both, basically. Because I understand there's some soil issues that might need to be dealt with, though. Is that not true anymore?
From what I understand, Mike, that property does not have any environmental issues to note.
Okay, and I'll just throw a comment out there since I didn't ask my other question. I'm actually for this and I think it's a good deal for the township. Thanks.
Thank you.
And also, Greg, I think there's some grant money out there for this, isn't there?
That's correct. The Redevelopment Authority on our behalf has applied for two grants. I think one is kind of a long shot. One is, we'd definitely like to get our hands on it. We think we qualify for it very well. I don't know if we'll receive it or not. So we are moving forward as if, and the financial planning, as if we are not going to receive it. But if we do receive it, obviously, that's less, it has to be financed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the public's edification, that this whole deal is done through the County Redevelopment Authority. We've been working with them since the beginning, that they're a pass-through agency, that they make the purchase and we make the purchase through them. And I'm hoping that they'll be able to dig up some additional grant money for us as far as reclamation goes. We're going to our fingers crossed that they will.
Yes, agreed.
Mr. Chair, just would like to, if Mr. Schuster knows off the top of his head, or Mr. McKay, this Shenandoah Woods project, as many, many years, it has come up to different boards. And it was in millions and millions of dollars that the Navy was asking. What was the highest number that it came down from?
I believe it was 26.
Right, $26 million. And we're paying one with remediation. So you know what? This is really the best decision we can make on behalf of our residents. You know, we don't have high density. The fire trucks can get through there. And it's going to beautify the township. So I think it's a win all the way around.
And we actually got to a point where, I'll bet you, we were approaching a million in legal fees. We paid the Redevelopment Authority's legal fees and ours since the Navy abandoned that property. And it's, we got to a point where I think the rest of the board agrees, it's time to close this. It's time because the meter's running every day. It has been running for years. And I'll bet you, we've approached a million dollars in legal fees. Someday, we'll have to look that up on a rainy day, Greg, of what we've spent in legal fees.
I can't wait.
Yeah, and it's time, it's time to move forward. You know, this has been lagging for so long, it's becoming now a blade over there. And, you know, and again, once again, the focus should have been on our representatives in Washington. So, yes, you're right. I can't agree more. It's time to move on, get this behind us, annex it to the park and everybody can enjoy it. So I guess we'll open it up to public comment? Well, we did already, right? No emails?
Somebody's there, somebody's at the podium.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Janice Charlton, Lemon Street, Warminster, Pennsylvania. I have a couple of comments. I'm a military veteran's wife. And for years, we would go over there to Shenandoah Woods. And it kind of breaks my heart that that property was well-prepared before it was closed down because it's a requirement, the military does a fantastic job winterizing before they shut things down because of the BRAC Commission and so on and so forth. It breaks my heart that something wasn't done previously, whether it was through Warminster, through the township, through the county, or the state or the city. I appreciate the comment that you made regarding the fact that we should have taken it to our senators and so on and so forth. Most residents aren't aware of that. They take it to their closest place, you know, they take it to you guys to see what we can do. I tried to reach out to the Navy about the property myself. We used to live on Kirk Road in Jacksonville there on the corner and got nowhere. But I think if we gave the opportunity to be able to, it's a lot of money when we're not really in a financial situation to be able to spend that kind of money right now, I don't think. But it's just heartbreaking that we didn't do something sooner when the property wouldn't have had to be torn down. I just, I just think there's something else we could have done. I think we should have made the residents aware that if they wanted to see something done with that property sooner, that they should write their senator and congresspeople. But I think we need to educate our constituents so that they understand what their options are, what they can do to make a difference. Thank you.
Well, we did have many public discussions about this property over the past 10 years. And, I mean, short of writing, sending a letter out to every resident of Warminster, we have been very public about what's gone on over there. I mean, you're correct that the property was winterized. Because we were in there, I'm going to go back seven years ago now that, I believe, seven or eight years ago, we sent our O9 department in there to give us a report. And they were indeed winterized at that time. Now that, I'm sure the places are destroyed now because people have gotten in there. But that led to our fear that if we don't purchase this, it could end up being a high-density property where we would have a hell of a time maintaining. Or we would have spent more than a million dollars fighting someone to try to put that in there. You can't even get a fire truck to turn around on those streets. They're not even up to our code. So that's how we ended up there. But we've had many, many public discussions about that property.
You know, I want to bring up something, too, right now. You know, we're financing a wonderful park project. We're annexing 56 acres to the park, the last 56 acres of open space in the township, along with a few other things that are, you know, we're going to finance. And, you know, everyone's refinancing their house. Corporate businesses are restructuring all their loans because money right now is at an all-time low to borrow. So if, I mean, if we're going to do this, this is actually the best time to do this because the interest rates are so low right now. And everyone knows it because corporate America, you know, residents, individual people, everyone's refinancing their debt because they know interest rates are so low. So we're actually at an opportune time here to go forward and finish up these projects. Yes, sir?
Hey, Don, Rob Price, Gorsein Drive. I have a question. I see that we're, you know, with this project over Warminster Park and then the purchase of this Shenandoah Woods. My question is, I'm real big with the youth sports for Warminster. I try to help out as much as I can. And is there ever going to be a chance of them putting, building a rec center? Because there used to be one right by my house, the Old Heart School, and they decided to tear that down and make a development back there. So, I mean, like, we're, you know, just curious. I figured I threw a question out there because, for example, Warminster Basketball has no place to play this year. Southampton has a rec center. Everyone's going over there. So my question was, I hear about purchasing land, building parks and stuff. What about a rec center? Thank you.
Well, I guess I can say, you know, the Warminster Park is an ongoing project. Anyone that's been involved in a 20, 30 million dollar project knows that things don't, you don't build the whole thing overnight. So, you know, in the future, we can certainly, you know, when the time is right, we can certainly do something like that to enhance the park even further. There's nothing wrong with enhancing the park because it's all for the residential use, for the residents' use, and, you know, that's a good thing. So, I mean, right now, we have to keep the hoods in front of the cart.
Mr. Chairman, there are no other comments from the podium. I did have one other email comment come in. It is from Ann Tucci, 89 Valley Road. That says, "Can the board please let us know what the cost would be to purchase this property per resident before it is purchased? You are spending tax-paid dollars, not your own money. I believe you need to make the residents aware of the cost to them before we do this. And do we need more parkland right now?" And that's the final comment.
Okay. I don't know what it would be per resident. I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah, we've never calculated that. But I believe there is a motion on the table. Was that correct? Was a motion made?
Yes, I believe so.
Yep.
Okay, so no more public comment. Let's call the vote. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Mr. Chairman, this is the motion to consider approval settlement with Aldi, correct?
Correct.
Correct, aye and aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Okay. So now we're going to get into financing. Mr. Schuster?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you've just made some very big decisions, including awarding the park project and the purchase of Shenandoah Woods. Now we have to discuss paying for that. At the previous meeting, PFM was here and they made a presentation about going out to market for financing for these efforts. And here from PFM is Scott Shear to talk about the results and recommendation of that effort. So I'll turn it over to Scott.
All right, well, thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Amanda, are you able to pull that presentation up on your screen, please? Thank you. So I think we have some pretty good results to share with you. We're pleased with the overall outcome. Maybe, Amanda, if you could go to page one. Great, thanks. So we'll start at the top. Obviously, the, you know, the past hour or so has been kind of a great introduction to this financing. But again, maybe just to get ourselves sort of re-acclimated here. In the first section of this page, where it talks about the borrowing for the acquisition and rehabilitation of Shenandoah Woods and the Warminster Community Park. So basically, you know, we were given a grant to send out an RFP to look at borrowing options for an eight-and-a-half million dollar drawdown bank loan for those respective projects. So that's basically what the main purpose of this handout is, is to review the results of that RFP. Now, I think we did, someone did previously mention or asked a question before about some grants. And I think Greg had answered that question about the Redevelopment Authority is applying for some grants on behalf of the township for the Shenandoah Woods acquisition and rehabilitation. And the township has already received some grants for the Warminster Community Park project. The goal is to, and the plan moving forward, is to pay down a portion of the new loan with grant monies already received, or maybe grant monies yet to be received, hopefully, if things go the township's way. So that's a little bit of background. As far as the RFP itself, again, we sent out the bank loan in section two, the bank loan RFP, to a whole host of local and regional and statewide banks. We received two proposals, one from FNB New Tem and Capital One. two proposals, uh, one from FNB Newtown and Capital One. Uh, after we did various analyses and, and chatted with the township staff, the FNB Newtown 10-year fix rate proposal, uh, looked like it had the lowest overall cost to the township. And so we'll get, we'll start focusing on that here in, uh, in a little bit. As far as the borrowing terms, um, that were laid out in the RFP, and then, uh, kind of what was responded to, uh, by FNB Newtown, so it's eight and a half million dollar, uh, drawdown facility. The borrowing term is 20 years. Uh, it's a level debt structure. Um, if you could scroll down just a little bit more, Amanda? Uh, thank you. Settlement date, um, assuming you move favorably on the, the action this evening, would be November 19th. That's when the funds are, uh, will become available. Uh, the loan is, loan debt service is anticipated to be paid out of the debt service fund, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Uh, and FNB Newtown is offering a, a two-year, 24-month drawdown period, which is very good, very flexible for the township, and the loan is prepayable anytime without penalty. So a lot of good provisions in this. Um, but again, the key thing is this is a drawdown bank loan, so back maximum amount, basically eight and a half million. Uh, if you draw down less than that, you pay less interest expense, and you are able to, uh, pay this off, um, at any point in time without any, any penalty. Next slide, please. So this is just a real brief summary, uh, really won't get into too much of the details of the, the proposals that we received. FNB Newtown actually submitted three different proposals with fixed rate terms of, of varying durations. Um, the one, uh, that we have highlighted in yellow is the one that we felt was most advantageous to the township, that had a fixed rate of a 1.7% for 10 years, and then after that, it will reset off, uh, the, uh, Wall Street Journal prime rate. When we, if we go all the way over to the right-hand side, when we sort of evaluated this and looked at everything, looked at the all-in true interest cost over various assumptions, that proposal, the 1.7% for 10 years, uh, uh, when we analyzed it, had the overall lowest all-in true interest cost. You can see they, they range there, uh, just within FNB Newtown's proposals, ranging from a 243 to a 291, and then the Capital One rate was a 292. Overall, when we compare those results to other proposals that we received for other, um, other credits similar to the township, you know, again, uh, right within the range that we expected them, so good, good overall proposal provides a lot of flexibility, uh, for the township with that structure. Next page, please. So this page here just looks at the overall debt service impact and the impact to the budget. So, in, in column one, there in the orange, um, underneath where it says drawdown bank loan, you know, again, we're, uh, maximum amount of 8.5 million to close on November 19th, uh, the 10-year fixed rate at 1.7%, um, with the rate to reset thereafter. You see what the, what I, I'll call the worst-case scenario, um, in, in column three. So that assumes basically all 8.5 million is drawn on day one. Um, it assumes that, um, none of it is paid down early with any kind of grant monies that the township may receive, and it also assumes that, uh, at the reset date after year 10, that it resets at the cap. Um, so again, we want to kind of give a worst-case scenario of what that annual debt service looks like, and you see it's about $560,000 per year or so after the first year. Um, and maybe just go back up to the top of that slide just a little bit. Um, you know, also just wanted to point out that, uh, there already is money kind of allocated in the debt service, uh, fund for that, about, uh, 1.06 mils of the 1.83, um, which is equivalent to that debt service is, is already factored in, um, to the, to the debt service fund for that, for prior budget planning. Um, next slide, please. Yeah, I think that really is, is, I think, the highlights that we wanted to go over. The rest of this is more detail of the loan. This is just to break the actual, um, you know, 20-year amortization, and then we also have in here the actual term sheet, the proposal, uh, from, um, from the bank, which I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but just in, in sake of time, I think the, the first couple pages that we went over, I think, uh, really highlight, um, the main aspects of, of this loan, if you decide you want to move forward with it this evening. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have a comment about the interest rate. You're right. Uh, businesses, even homeowners that, that want to do some, uh, work around their houses are getting loans now. People are buying houses like crazy because the interest rate, our rates are so low, and it is our best option at this time to, to, uh, move forward with, with this, uh, with the Shenandoah Woods. Thank you.
That's a question. It might be more a question directed to Mr. Schuster, not you, Scott. But, um, do we have a number of what the costs, uh, the extra cost on the community park project as far as the difference in bids and the engineering cost? I assume they're being factored into this loan?
That's correct, uh, Mr. McKay. Um, I don't have an exact figure, but, um, if you were to go ahead and take the entire scope of the park project, um, with all changes that were put in, and take out all the grant monies, uh, that have already been received or will be received, you're looking at approximately $1 million.
Thank you. Does somebody have a television on or something? Thank you. Thank you. So, Scott, what, what you're showing us is, uh, an eight and a half million dollar, dollar drawdown on day one, correct?
That's right. Worst-case scenario, all of it drawn down on day one, and, and nothing repaid, nothing repaid early. That's correct.
So, so, um, you know, I know there's some, uh, some rumors floating around out there about us spending all the grant money. Um, I, I just want to be clear, because I, I, I inquired about this today, and, uh, um, I believe Catherine or Greg, if I'm, let me know if I'm incorrect here, but we have not spent one dime of the grant money as of right now, correct?
Uh, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have, of course, spent money, uh, primarily on the engineering of, of the project, uh, but we have not spent grant money. In fact, uh, the RACP grant and the DCNR grant, uh, have not yet even been received. The only grant that has been received is the Lux County Open Space Funds, uh, and that has not been spent.
Thank you. So, uh, one last question, uh, Scott. Have you reached out to, uh, Lucian, Lucian Calhoun at the, um, Dover Valley Regional Financial Authority?
Give me the Scott.
Yep, sorry, keeping the wrong button. I personally have not. I can check with, uh, my colleagues to see if they have.
Okay. Um, so, uh, and the reason I say that is, they have some other things available over there that, um, that I'm not sure, um, if they're advantageous or not for us to, um, to look at them or not. Um, I know that there's a, I believe, Greg, you told me there's a penalty for early payment?
Uh, that's what I was advised. I was told that there was no drawdown, uh, feature as well.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Yeah, the drawdown feature is, um, uh, I, I like that option, because, um, we don't have to take money out of the loan. We don't have to draw down money if we don't need it. And, um, and that keeps our, our payments at a, at a manageable, uh, level.
Yep. And have a 24-month drawdown facility. That, that is very flexible. We usually don't see one for, for that, for that long.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, do you think we should look at other options at this time, or are you okay with, uh, uh, just, as I like the drawdown factor too. I think that's a really, uh, that, that is really nice to have in your pocket.
Uh, quite honestly, we could, we could move forward. I mean, I'm okay with moving forward with this, because if we, if, if we ever had to refinance this in the, in the, uh, uh, in the first few years, it, it can be done at a minimal cost. So I, I don't have any issues right now. So what's our next move here?
Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, if you are, uh, have no further questions, um, I believe would be appropriate would be a motion to, to award the bid for financing to FNB Newtown at a fixed rate of 1.7% for 10 years, resetting to 65% of prime with a cap of 4.5%.
Okay, is there a motion?
All motion.
Second?
Second.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have one written public comment. I don't know if it was intended for this exact item, but I'll read it anyways. This is from Paul Crager, 1221 Linda Lane. Why are you, as the Board of Supervisors, willing to put the taxpayers in debt when we have a very valuable asset to sell? Let's sell water authority and apply that money to the current debt, and we'll be on sound financial footing for the next several years. This will stop all the need for tax increases. That's the only written comment I have.
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
I believe, uh, someone at the podium is, uh, there for comment as well.
Hi, I'm Mike Fire, uh, 948 Cornell Drive. I, I just wanted to clear something up. I wasn't real sure. Uh, the, the bids that, that we talked about earlier, uh, they're fully paid by the two grants? Is that, is that the, is that the plan?
Go ahead, Greg. You want to say that one?
Uh, yeah, they are not fully funded by the two grants. Uh, the features that were chosen, um, uh, do exceed, uh, the amount of the grants. Even if we went with a base bid, uh, it would still exceed the amounts that are available.
Do we know how much that is of, of the project that we awarded the bids to that will kind of overflow into this and will finance?
Yeah, I believe I answered that earlier for Mr. McKay. I don't have the exact number, but it's in the range of a million dollars.
Okay. Uh, and then the rest of this financing, it's, and I understand the drawdown loan and all that, but this is for the Shenandoah Woods project, uh, you know, the property and all that, uh, and some of the additional costs, like the engineering stuff that, uh, talked about earlier. Uh, is, is there also additional features that's not part of those, those bids that will also be added into this? That's not part of the, the bid projects?
No, the finances, which we are discussing right now are for, um, four distinct things. One is the, uh, a park project funded by the DCNR grants. Two is the park project funded by the RACP grant. Three, the acquisition of Shenandoah Woods, and four, the, uh, any cleanup needed at Shenandoah Woods.
And, and then whatever's left over from the park, right? That's not covered by the
Whatever. I was just talking about the project as a whole, with all the,
Right.
Yeah, that's all, what all financing is going towards. Whatever grants we receive will be put towards paying down that debt.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Bob Welsh, Chalwell Avenue, Warmminster, PA. Uh, one question I have is, will you be drawing down the whole 8.5 million?
Well, we don't know, uh, as far, Greg, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, I mean, you, you just said it right there. We, we don't exactly know. Um, the reason why it is a drawdown loan, um, is because we don't know what the final numbers are going to be. We obviously have a very good idea on what the numbers are for the park bids, because we have bids in hand. Of course, there could be change orders, uh, here and there, and some minor variation, but those numbers are relatively good. Uh, what the big unknown is, is how much the cleanup is going to be, uh, over at the Shenandoah Woods. So we would certainly hope that we don't draw down the 8.5 million, uh, but we don't know, um, how much we, we, uh, we are, what we're going to draw down. I would actually be surprised if we did draw down the full amount. Uh, we purposely aimed somewhat high, because it really doesn't matter financially whether we have an eight and a half million, or nine and a half million, or, you know, drawdown loan, because we're not paying interest on it until we actually draw it down. So the, the loan is designed to be larger than what we need simply, because it doesn't cost us anything to, to have that extra question.
And, and we're not, we're not, this is not a slush fund. We're, we're, we're going to use this money, uh, we're going to, we're going to manage this very, very carefully, because we do not plan to, uh, just, just, just hand out checks. So, uh, we managed, uh, judicially.
A drawdown loan can only be used for the express purposes, uh, of what we discussed this evening.
All right, so you're saying on day one, you will not draw down 8.5 million?
I can tell you with certainty, we would definitely not draw it down 8.5. Uh, we will draw down initially, uh, what is needed for the ALDI settlement, and then after that, we will draw down funds, uh, to reimburse ourselves for existing engineering costs that are paid out of, uh, the general fund. And then after that, it would be, uh, as payments are due, uh, to contractors that, that were selected for the project, uh, we will do draw down that.
Okay, uh, the other question I have is far as the, let me understand the cap. Uh, after 10 years, it's a fixed rate, right? So it's a 4.5 cap after the prime, or 4.5 total? Because you won't know what the prime is in 10 years.
Yeah, 4.5 total, total.
4.5 total, even if prime is 10%, if the economy goes in a tank. They're going to guarantee us a 4.5%.
That, that's correct. The, the overall cap rate is a 4.5%.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no further written comments, and there are no additional comments in the public area.
Okay, so, uh, motion was made to, um, uh, this is, uh, number one, right, to consider the award of the Warmminster Community Park Shenandoah Woods purchase that?
Uh, correct. I already, the motion's already been, uh, made in second, I believe.
Yes, correct. So I guess, uh, no more comment. We'll call the question. Kathy? You just muted your, uh, line there.
All right, aye.
Uh, Mark?
Unfortunately, I'm a no on this, because I, I just can't get past this additional million dollars on this park project that's being put into this. I fully support Shenandoah Woods and the reclamation. If there's any way we could separate that out, I'd be all on board. But being that it's all a bunch together, I have to vote no.
Okay.
Respectfully.
Uh, Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So the motion carries 4-1. Okay, next on the list, uh, Mr. Schuster?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next part of this is, anytime you issue financing, you have to do an associated ordinance. Uh, you have ordinance 764, uh, before you. This ordinance, uh, was prepared by our bond counsel, uh, Bucky Klosser. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know, but this is a standard ordinance incorporating the decisions that, uh, you just made, uh, for the financing. And the appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance 764.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, well, I'll move.
Second?
It's the same. Second.
Okay, uh, any, any comments?
I have no written comments on this issue. Uh, is there anyone at the podium? I've been informed there are no comments in the meeting room.
Okay, any comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Uh, Mark?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries 4-1. Okay. Moving along to the next item. Um, pension allegation bond. Mr. Schuster?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you know, um, we have been discussing various methods to deal with township's financial, uh, situation. Uh, the largest item that we have before us is our unfunded pension liability. Uh, in discussions with, uh, board members and, uh, research we've been done, uh, we're doing with PFM, uh, we are presenting, or PFM is presenting, an option to do a pension obligation bond. Uh, so, and then I'll turn it
So I'm going to turn it over to Scott Shear again to do some introduction to it. Our intention is if the board is willing to move forward on this, we would do the necessary legwork and bring it to your next meeting for action. The actual bond, if authorized, would not be done until 2021. As you'll see with the presentation, is intentionally a works-in-all presentation. There are many good aspects to a pension obligation bond. However, there are also quite a few risks. So I encourage the board to pay attention and ask those questions because it is a financial vehicle which has helped out a number of governments, but also for some has not worked out as intended. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott.
Great, thank you again, Mr. Schuster. Amanda, could you go to the first page, please? There we go. So yes, as Mr. Schuster mentioned, the kind of the timeline that we're looking at at the moment is this evening would just be a preliminary discussion and then if you deemed an authorization to proceed with starting to prepare some of the documents, to come back on November 5th, and at that time, there'd be the board meeting to consider the parameters ordinance to then ultimately effectively the borrowing, say January or February or March, sometime first quarter of next year after we receive some additional information from the actuary. So that's just a tentative timeline if you did want to move forward. So again, the action item basically would be the November 5th meeting. Assuming you'd be comfortable after this evening's meeting to authorize us to proceed, to start moving ahead. Next slide, please. Very good. So just in general, I mean, sort of a lot of stuff on this page, we'll just hit on a few of the bullet points. So I think as most of us know, in Pennsylvania, contributions to the pension plan basically come from three sources. The Commonwealth, the local municipality, and also in many instances, members of the plan. So various monies go into the pension fund invested, and then ultimately that money is spent out of the pension fund to make its obligations. The bottom two points I think are the key ones. When pension funds, pension plans are underfunded, the MMO, which you'll hear a lot about, or the minimum municipal obligation, will then increase and then ultimately put budgetary pressure on the municipality. Again, that's when pension plans are underfunded. You will then see the MMO begin to rise. And, you know, again, Warmster is not alone in this. There are many other municipalities across the Commonwealth and outside the Commonwealth that are considering and implementing similar strategies as we're going to talk about this evening, but also with the strategy of issuing a pension obligation bond or otherwise known as a POB, there's also should be definitely discussion and serious consideration on plan reform at the same time as well. Next slide. At a high level, this page here just kind of goes through the basic mechanics of a pension obligation bond. And we'll just kind of walk through the three bullet points on the left just to kind of get ourselves reacquainted. So basically, an issuer of a POB will issue long-term debt, say 20-year debt. It's going to be a taxable fixed rate. And once that transaction closes, and again, from the timeline earlier in this presentation, we were assuming, say maybe March or April of 2021, those proceeds from that taxable bond issue would then be deposited into the pension plan. POBs are pension obligation bonds. It's basically an arbitrage strategy between the cost of the financing, kind of comparing what that all-in yield is on the 20-year fixed rate taxable financing versus the return on the investment in the pension fund. Below their investment rates that are greater than the borrowing cost will ultimately achieve net savings to the pension obligation. And then there should be, you know, a lot of discussion on how those proceeds should be invested in the asset class that provides the best overall risk-return trade-off, which again will be for further discussions with your pension consultant and other advisors on the best allocation of those monies if you decide you want to move forward. One of the big concepts with a POB, and some will say it's a con, is you replace basically a soft liability with your annual contribution to the pension plan. That's called, we'll call it soft liability because you could, I'll say, delay that payment. Some municipalities sometimes skip that payment for a certain amount of time, ultimately then it is paid into the pension plan. But you're replacing that with a hard liability, meaning a debt service payment. Defaulting on a debt service payment carries with it a lot of negative consequences. So again, there is that difference between a soft liability by paying that MMO as the township has been versus a hard liability of a debt service payment. Again, that just kind of gives you the overall mechanics of a POB or pension obligation bond. Next slide, please, Amanda. So as far as history of pension obligation bond issues, so they're not done, they're not completed very frequently. And this just kind of goes back in time, goes back about 20 years of the different POBs that have been issued. We saw quite a few in 2003 when interest rates were very low. Again, in 2008, we saw kind of another high point in the issuance of pension obligation bonds. And probably here, once we get the statistics for 2020 and maybe 21, we'll probably see another uptick in that. And it really comes down to the low cost of borrowing that has been mentioned multiple times in this evening's meeting that like I said, many, many other municipalities across the state, across the country are looking at, if we can borrow taxable long-term debt at a rate, say, you know, 3% or less and put that in our pension plan where we expect to earn returns of, you know, 5%, 6%, 7%, whatever that number may be, it seems like something worth considering. So, you know, again, I just want to, there's a lot of debt issued by municipalities across our Commonwealth, for instance, but not so much from the standpoint of a POB. It's not done on a daily basis. It is done, but just less frequent. Next slide, please. So again, this kind of gets into more of the concepts of the pension obligation bond and if it's the right thing to do or not as far as the timing of it. So we'll just kind of go through a couple of these points here. The period of time when we can most reasonably expect that the proceeds that are invested in the stock market, we're not going to lose sort of that, those dollars kind of right off the bat, if you will, when the proceeds are deposited in the pension fund. That's always one of the criticisms of POBs that you go borrow the money, you're going to pay debt service over the next 20 years. You stick the money in the pension plan, but then what happens if we see a major hit to the stock market, to the pension plan return, and therefore those assets become, you know, much, much less again. That's an issue. And so there's no such thing as perfect timing in the market. But, you know, this kind of just gives you that illustration of when may be the most opportune time to consider this, and that's kind of when we're in this trough period, when you see in that graph kind of on the right-hand side, where when you see a dip in the economy, when you start to come out of it. And, you know, many think that that's, you know, about where we are right now, where we're coming out of, you know, one of the hardest times that we've seen. You know, we may be coming out of it pretty quickly, you know, time will tell. But, you know, again, this just kind of gives you an overall illustration of sort of the concept behind it and when it may be more beneficial to entertain this idea. Next slide. Some considerations. So, you know, definitely there was issues that Mr. Schuster mentioned early on, you know, we've kind of hit on some of the points this evening, but they should be addressed and discussed. And number one, we already hit on the bonds are a hard cost. You know, we already kind of hit on that point about the hard cost versus the soft cost. The third point I think is pretty key. This, by issuing POBs, it does not eliminate the possibility of an unfunded actuarial liability payment in the future if investment earnings do not meet projections assumed in the actuarial report. Again, this could be the case, you know, regardless of whether the township issues POBs or not. And so basically, again, what that means is you put the money in the pension plan now, but in the future, whether it's two years from now, five years from now, or over the full term, the full duration of the 20-year bond issue, that the investment rates in that pension fund are less than the borrowing cost on those bonds, you're going to end up paying more over time. So, you know, that's one thing that we definitely want to make sure that we consider. Yeah, again, the actual returns may fail to exceed the cost of the debt service. And ultimately, the size of the POB, it should reflect the manageable amount of debt service just in case the investment returns do not achieve the overall projections that are assumed in the models. So again, those are some of the considerations, but it really boils down to really the difference between the borrowing costs and the investment rates. In theory, say a 3% borrowing cost versus a 6% return on your pension plan, it seems like that's a good thing, but you just never know that 6% in the pension fund or 7% or 7.5, whatever the number is ultimately going to be, six and three quarters, is that going to be achievable over the duration of that 20-year financing? Amanda, next slide, please. Some additional considerations. You know, as I mentioned earlier on in the presentation, in order to be the most effective, POBs must be part of an overall long-term comprehensive strategy. And that could be an overall comprehensive strategy of the township's budget, making sure that it's sustainable going forward, but it's also a comprehensive strategy with the overall benefit package, benefit plan of the pension fund. We want to make sure that the situation does not occur again, five years from now or 10 years from now, where we're having a similar discussion. Let's see, the third point down, future underfunding of MMO payments by the township will diminish the impact of a POB. So again, just because this is done, does not mean that we can skip some MMO payments or underfund some of the obligations. You got to stay on track with that or we'll be right back in the same position. Sometimes higher pension funding levels may trigger other employee demand for increased benefits. So that's something, you know, just to kind of think about when we're talking about pension funding. And then even if executed with a very thoughtful and well-managed issuance of debt and an overall investment strategy, there are definitely some negative connotations out there with POBs. One, for instance, is GFOA Association, the Government Finance Officers Association. They, you know, kind of frown on POBs, but, you know, they're done in certain instances. And, you know, this is one of the kind of tools that are available to the township with your budget issues at the moment that, again, should be able to provide an overall benefit to the township's bottom line. But again, these are just some considerations we wanted to make sure everyone had a chance to think about. Next slide, please. So here's a, just totally hypothetical, but we wanted to get across a couple of points in this POB scenario. Where, again, this is just an example, hypothetical example, where let's just say right now the MMO in total is 3.4 million. 1.1 million for non-uniform, 2.3 million for uniform, again totaling 3.4. If on the left-hand side, what we call the base case, there's an $18 million POB issuance. So taxable pension obligation bond issuances. Again, that current MMO right now is 3.4 million, but after that 18 million is deposited into the pension plan, that's now going to revise the MMO, let's just say in this example, to $700,000. That's a difference of $2.7 million. You factor in the debt service from this loan of 1.3 million and change, the overall net benefit with this assumption is 1.35 million. On the right-hand side is another scenario where, you know, again, the $18 million POB issuance is completed. The current MMO goes from 3.4 million down to 700,000, so you see that benefit of 2.7 million less the debt service of 1,350, but let's just say in the future, for whatever reason that may be, the MMO starts to increase again. So now there's more unfunded liability, just more than kind of the normal cost of the MMO that the township is paying. And just say that additional MMO might be 1.5 million. Well, now your net cost is negative. There's a net cost of $150,000. So it's just a hypothetical that we wanted to keep it kind of very high level, but that's something just to sort of have in our minds as we're kind of thinking through the POB, that things change in the future. Actuarial assumptions change, interest earnings in the pension plan change, the debt service isn't going to. That's going to stay locked in for the 20-year duration unless the township would decide you want to refinance it. But things can change with the overall plan that what may have been perceived as an overall net benefit over the long haul may not be. And again, those are just assumptions that no one can predict and variables that no one can predict right now into the future. Next slide, please, Amanda. And that, I mean, that's really it for kind of this high-level overview. We've had some good discussions with the administration and the committee here over the past month or two. You know, the township has put together a good team to analyze this with the actuary and some other consultants. And so, you know, again, no real formal action is being taken tonight. Tonight is basically just the authorization to proceed or the sample motion to move forward, appointing the team to continue to move forward and start preparing documents to come back before you for the actual ordinance at your November 5th meeting. But again, the actual debt issuance itself will not be contemplated until, say, the first quarter of next year. So with that, you know, Mr. Schuster, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that or happy to answer any questions that anyone has right at the moment as well.
No, I don't have any questions. I think it'd be appropriate if the board were to go ahead and ask their questions or comments at this point.
I have a question, Scott. You mentioned that the GFOA did not recommend the POB. Is that because of the amount of risk that's involved?
Basically, yes. Yeah. I mean, they're aware of, you know, some of the cases that have gone wrong over the years, you know, where the debt was issued. And, you know, ultimately then, for whatever reason, maybe the pension plan did not perform as well. So after you factored in the debt service that was being paid now for this POB, and now the unfunded liability kind of creeped back up again, the respective governmental entities are in a worse-off situation based on those assumptions. Again, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Every scenario is different. We know of others that we've done where they worked out absolutely fine. But it is just that, it's a risk that no one knows. It could be kind of more or less status quo where everything works perfectly. It could work even better than expected. I mean, what if your pension fund, you know, we get into an economy where your pension fund is returning 9, 10, 11, 12% for a sustained amount of time, that's even going to provide more benefit. So when we say risk, I really look at it, it could go either way. It could be a benefit or it could be kind of a negative. We just don't know, but it's something that we want to make sure we disclose.
In the state of Pennsylvania, do you know of other municipalities, boroughs, et cetera, who have taken this action and have had success with it?
Yeah, there have been some recently that I know of firsthand where they are in a positive situation, yes.
And how many have really struggled and been in the negative, like the example that you showed us? Are there quite a few that in that position also?
The ones that I know in Pennsylvania, again, there are some of those. I'd say it's a mixed bag. Some of the ones that were issued, I'd say back in 2003, when we looked at that one chart where we saw a spike in issuance in 2003, some of those have, you know, we've seen their unfunded liability creep back up and therefore their MMO. So it really is, I can't say it's all one or the other. We've seen some good stories and some not-so-good stories. But yeah, they're both out there.
Could we have some more examples going moving forward so that would help us make a clear decision?
Sure, we can.
If I may, Scott, Bucks County, a few years back, when we were on the Budget Committee, Nora Finello and I spoke with the then Director of Finance uh, Nora Finello and I, um, spoke with the, the then, um, um, Director of Finance, or, or, um, and, uh, they had issued a pension obligation bond, and actually, they, they were very successful where they, they, um, they actually did very well, and the, uh, the, the unfunded liability was completely funded, and the, uh, um, you know, when the, when the call for the, uh, for the bond came through, they, they, they paid it off, and, uh, they also had the pension, um, very well-funded.
Yep. Yeah, but that is, that is a good story. Some of the ones that we've heard, um, that's a good point. I mean, that, that one, from my understanding, worked out very well. Some of the ones where we've seen in the past, um, where maybe it didn't work out as well, is, is for whatever reason may have taken place, um, that the debt that was issued in some cases, um, may have been extended even longer. So maybe it was a 20-year financing originally, and then for whatever reason, it was extended longer, and, you know, sometimes that did not work out, uh, in the entity's favor. So again, there's, there's different reasons. Some worked out well, some not so well, but yeah, we can get back in touch with the administration and, and, and look at some other, um, uh, some other case studies.
So Scott, is, is, um, I thought I saw something on there about an assumed rate of 8%?
Well, that was just, I think, in that hypothetical illustration that, that we had there. I mean, I, yeah, I, I would defer to Mr. Schuster on that, but I think the goal, um, would be for the townships. Yeah, I think the goal for the township specifically, uh, Greg, I don't know if you want to get into or not, would be to reduce the township's, um, discount rate or assumed
Discount.
Rate, the, the, the discount rate, yeah, to something, you know, probably less than 7%.
That, that's correct. We are currently aiming for 6.75%, uh, which we think is much more realistic. And as Scott spoke about, you know, the, the potential for, uh, the P O B, uh, to not bear fruits, uh, you have to look at some of the factors that could make it go astray. And certainly, one of them is continuing to use a, a assumed rate of return that is too high. Uh, so we do want to adjust that, uh, which would have initially a, a negative impact on our budget, because the normal cost, uh, is going to increase. Uh, so, but that's, that's the financially prudent thing to do. There are other things that could cause a pension obligation bond, uh, to, to, to go awry, and some of those I don't think are necessarily a factor here. Um, we, at, all non-uniform employees, uh, that hired, that were hired after 2000, or 2013 and later, are no longer in a pension plan. Uh, so we're not adding new non-uniform employees to this, uh, nor are we expanding the benefit. So some of those things that could happen, uh, just really aren't a factor. That being said, um, the risks that were pointed out in Scott's, uh, presentation should, should definitely be considered.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we should give PFM the go-ahead to go ahead and, uh, give us all this information at the next meeting to discuss.
So i- if the board is so inclined, and there is a sample motion, uh, that's included at the end of, uh, the presentation, uh, and just to be clear, this is not a motion, uh, which finalizes anything or authorizes the issuance of these bonds. Uh, the motion is, uh, that the Warmminster Township Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize the administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors LLC as independent financial advisor, Hernan Heffner, LLP as bond counsel, and the township solicitor to proceed with the issuance of taxable general obligation bonds, the proceeds of which will be used towards the funding of the township's employee retirement pension plans. So if that motion is passed, uh, we will come before you, uh, most likely at the next meeting, uh, with everything prepared, uh, for you to move forward.
Okay, I'll make the motion. That's fine. So we can look at it next time.
I'll second that motion. I think the more, the more information we, we get, and the more discussion, will, will lead us to be able to make the best decision.
Right.
Okay, you know, and I, I, I know, um, Mary and I, um, have been working, uh, with, with Greg and Catherine, a- and Scott, and, um, you know, we went through this, and, um, you know, one of the things you don't want to do is, just like every other, um, investment, is you do not want to, you know, we were talking about dollar-cost averaging. You know, you, you don't want to just dump in, uh, $30 million into, into the pension fund and put it into the market or wherever, especially when the, when the, when, when the markets are at an all-time high, um, because that's not true, and that's not being responsible. So, um, you know, and that's where some of these, um, uh, these bonds fail, is, uh, when they made their initial investments, uh, and put the money in. So we, we have some mechanisms that we've, we've talked about, and, uh, you know, we can bring them up. Um, Scott, I know we talked about, uh, um, not just putting the, uh, all the money in right at one, right away. There were, there's avenues where we can dollar-cost average this, and, and make it more beneficial, um, uh, on an investment standpoint.
That's right. Yep.
Good points, Ken, and I think whatever, uh, information that you and Mary have garnered from these, these, uh, discussions will, uh, greatly help us too, in the discussions that we have moving forward.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we're, we're, we're happy, I mean, uh, Catherine, Greg, myself, Mary, we're happy to share any information with anybody that, you know, I've said this before, um, there's, there's nothing to hide here. Uh, we're looking to, um, we're looking to pay our debt that, um, that's been building and building over the years. Um, so, um, you know, there's a lot of different ways to go about it, and, um, you know, we, we, this is by no means, as Greg pointed out, this is not a, um, a motion to actually issue the bonds, but, um, to move forward to get more information and prepare some documents.
Do we have a cost cap on what, moving forward, will cost us to get, to gather the additional information? Is there not to exceed cost, or do we know?
Are, are you referring to PFM's cost?
Correct.
Yeah, Scott, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, there's, well, from PFM's standpoint, um, we only get paid if the transaction actually occurs. Um, so the, the township decides not to do a P O B, we're not going to charge anything for that. As far as the cost to come back on November 5th, um, there would be the cost of advertising for the ordinance, which, you know, maybe a thousand dollars or something, but I can only speak from PFM's feet. If, if the township decides to not pursue that, we're not going to charge anything for it. I can't speak for any of the other professionals, um, involved in it, but that, that's our standpoint. Any other questions?
This is a question for, for next month. Um, do we know what, if we, I guess we don't know that if we were to move forward this, what the impact would be to our debt service, village. I know that upcoming, upcoming budget presentation, there's a, there's a number in there, but we, we wouldn't know a hard number, so PFM does their due diligence, correct?
Well, it's, it, it's even beyond that, because, um, you know, we do have numbers that have been looked at, and we, you know, it's more of an actuarial-driven, uh, discussion. So we do have, uh, those numbers in place. However, what we don't know is, when the bonds are issued, what the rate we're going to get. So we'll be plugging in a debt service figure i- in this year for next year, um, but it's, you know, I can't sit here and tell you if it's going to be 100% accurate. Uh, it just depends on whatever the, the market bears when we go out to issue.
And I would think it, it also depends on how much we, we, um, would want to issue as far as the bond.
Right, definitely.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, if you're ready to move on to public comment, uh, I can tell you I have no, uh, email comments on this topic.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the room?
Just wait a second and see if anyone's at the podium. I've been informed there's no comment, uh, in the room.
Okay, so, uh, with no more comment, I guess we'll call the question. There was, was there a mo- there was a motion, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Kathy?
Aye.
Uh, Mark?
Being that, being that there's no cost associated with PFM, I'm all ears to hear some R.
Okay.
I'm a yes.
Okay. Uh, Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And, uh, and Chair votes aye with the theme, uh, that, that it, there's no cost, and, uh, it gives us, uh, another avenue, and, uh, and, and we can educate ourselves on some of the options here. So, uh, motion carries 5-0. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
You bet. Take care.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, public comment. Emails first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, the first, uh, written comment, uh, is from Terry Sprango, Sprango of 1051 Valley Road. Uh, she writes, uh, "Does any of the current Warmminster Township supervisors receive directly or indirectly any campaign donations from the township's solicitors, any financial companies retained for any asset or debt financing valuations for the sale of the stormwater system, the Warmminster Municipal Water Authority, or the debt financing for the new construction project bid on the recent agendas for 2020, or any of the construction bidding companies or associated engineering design firms for the named projects on the 2020-year agenda, or any other conflicts of interest you may not have disclosed and would like to publicly disclose to correct the record. Rest with regards, Terry Sprango." Uh, additionally, we have, um, from, uh, Mary McGee. "Hello, I was upset to read on Warmminster Patch, uh, Facebook, that one of our neighbors felt it important to try and shame our supervisors about tonight's meeting. He said they were in their COVID-19 bunkers. This comment was inappropriate. Everyone should have the right to make their own decisions regarding the safety of themselves and family members without being judged. Thank you, Mary McGee."
And that McGee is no relation to me, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, it is, it, it is McGee, McGee with a G. Uh, uh, next comment is Bob Marini. Uh, "Just wondering, it seems like we are combining districts at polling locations. Are they going to be able to handle the quantity of voters in a timely manner that people do not get turned away? What is the reason for the restructure?" And the last email comment I have is from Joy Capuzzi, Capuzzi, uh, I was, of 530 Penrose Lane. "I was happy to see that in-person public comment is available for tonight's meeting. However, I and other residents cannot sit in my car and listen to the meeting on the radio, waiting for permission for the proper timing to enter the building to speak on a specific agenda item to a virtual board. While this is a step in the right direction and the effort is appreciated, it's not the best option to be able to include the public, especially as the cold weather approaches. Two months ago, I suggested finding a larger venue that meetings could continue and be open to the public, uh, with proper social distancing. It seems that this is not going to happen, so I respectfully request that Warmminster follow the lead of our neighboring townships, North Hampton and Warrington, and conduct Zoom meetings that are open to the residents from their homes. Instructions on how to join the meeting would be posted on the township website, and that way anyone interested can join and truly participate in the meeting virtually, being able to comment at the correct time to any particular agenda item or during public comment. These type of meetings are held all the time for business, and I know it is feasible for our supervisor meetings. We can still offer access at the administration building for those who prefer that option. Please continue to work in the best interest of our residents to make the POS meetings as accessible as possible. Thank you." And that's all the, uh, written, uh, email comments I have, uh, and if there's anyone at the podium, uh, they can throw it this time.
Good evening. Bob Welsh, Hollowell Avenue, Warmminster, PA. I got to say, I hear a lot of spending money, millions of dollars, and I hear a lot of putting Warmminster in debt for millions of dollars. But I want to tell you what I don't hear. I don't hear a voice on this board for the senior citizens of this town, or the people in fixed income, or on the other end of the spectrum, the young couples trying to start a family. You have to realize, they cannot afford the decisions you're making here. I just want you to think about that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Fire, 948 Cornell Drive. Uh, I just wanted to kind of give a shout-out to Karen Whitney, um, for, um, the rubber ducky regatta that went off. Uh, it's a lot better when there's a lot of people there. Of course, we had to do it kind of incognito this year. Um, and, uh, I know it's been posted on Facebook and everything else, but the video's out there, uh, on the township site. Um, it was a good event, and then, uh, also having the, uh, the golf outing this week, uh, kind of, other than the weather, kind of went off without a hitch. Uh, so it was a really good job, especially in these times, to be able to pull off two events like that. And, uh, speaking of Parks and Rec, uh, I, I seem to remember back in July, there was a, it was a open citizen advisor seat on the board, and I was wondering if that was filled or will be filled at any time in, in the future?
I'm sorry, I missed that, Mike. What was that question?
I, I seemingly remember back in, like, July, that there was, uh, there was a request to fill an open seat on the Parks and Rec board for a citizen advisor, and I, I don't remember that being filled. Uh, if it has been, and I just didn't know about, I'm sorry. But, uh, if it hasn't, is there any plans to fill that seat anytime soon?
Uh, most likely, um, that, that seat will, it's so close to the end of the year, that seat will probably be filled in January.
July wasn't really that close to the end of the year, but that's all right. I just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Hey, Joe Veltin, 637 Mule Road. Uh, I'm here to talk about, uh, an indoor storage facility that was just approved by the zoning board. It's at York and Street Road where the, uh, old SMG was, and I'm here to just speak on, you know, just the feeling of being let down. Um, the indoor facility is in a shop, it's going to be proposed to be built in a shopping center, uh, right in York and Street Road, our area. Uh, this was previously approved by the Board of Supervisors as a shopping center. It's not allowed by right, it's not allowed by special exemption by the zoning board, and it's not allowed by conditional use of the Board of Supervisors that just recently did, uh, 40 York Road. It is allowed in the industrial office complexes, Jacksonville Road, uh, Park Avenue. We actually have two indoor storage facilities on Jacksonville Road. We have another one on Park and County Line. There's one just as you leave Warmminster on, uh, Street Road of Valley. Seems like we have plenty of them. The Board of Supervisors sought fit to send a solicitor that the taxpayers paid for because they were opposed to it, and they, and that's, I would assume he represented the, the residents of Warmminster and the Board of Supervisors to oppose this zoning board hearing, um, decision, and it, it didn't, it didn't work. Um, I, I'm here because the Board of Supervisors are elected officials, the zoning board are not, so, uh, this is my only medium to, uh, voice my opinion. I'm just wondering what other challenges we're going to have with this indoor storage facility in our shopping center district. We have Lidl that's coming in. They're going to build a new, uh, supermarket. They're going to try and, uh, fit out the existing Pathmark building. They want to bring in a nice-sized restaurant right there, where we're going to have an indoor storage facility. So I think that might be a challenge for them. Uh, and I also wonder what kind of challenges we're going to have going forward, if these areas that you approved in the, in the, in the zoning ordinance, where you tried to guide where things can get built in Warmminster, if they just come in and say, "Well, I don't know what the hardship was," to tell you the truth. It, it, you know, I, I get that it's hard to fill out space right now, but it seems like it went pretty quick to, uh, call it a hardship. Um, so I, I'm here to just voice my opinion that I'm let down as a resident of Warmminster Township. I have a lot of pride in Warmminster Township. I want to see it built out. I want to see it built out correctly. Um, and I'm asking the board to appeal that decision. Don't, you know, you, you already spent the money to, to show that we opposed it. Um, it's not built yet. There's still a way to appeal it, and, uh, that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to ask the board to consider appealing that zoning board decision, because I think it's a poor use of that, that a poor use of that, that area. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. And, 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 um, I don't disagree with that. And, um, this is an example of what I was saying about ordinances, um, and, um, and handing out waivers like, uh, like Halloween candy. Um, you know, if we're not going to, if we're going to use our ordinances, um, just when convenient, then, uh, why do we have ordinances at all? I mean, these things have been around for a long time. These ordinances are set up, just as Joe said, just as you said, to, um, to, to guide where certain facilities and construction belongs. Um, so we'll take that under advisement, Joe. Thank you for your comment. And, um, we'll, we'll see where it goes. Are there any other comments?
Hello. Hi, I'm Janice Charlton, um, representing the Warmminster Speedway. I've been speaking with my neighbors over the last couple of weeks of their concerns. I was elected back in June as their committee person, um, committee woman. And one of the concerns a lot of us have in the neighborhood is a lot of people cut through the Speedway. I understand the nickname Speedway. It's a great idea, but it kind of gives the implication that they should be speeding through the neighborhood, which unfortunately is what's happening. I was wondering what the possibility of having a left turn arrow at the intersection of York Road, thereby Giant and the Batteries Plus at Nemoral to help ease congestion so people go up there to turn as opposed to cutting through the neighborhood and maybe putting their left turns on some of the, um, traffic crossing onto York Road as well as street where it's hazardous to kind of encourage people to cross, um, at the traffic lights in that neighborhood. Hoping to cut down congestion and speeding cars through the neighborhood so they're not cutting through. A lot of children play in that neighborhood. It's nice to have young families back in Speedway. And the kids want to be able to play since a lot of them are home now.
Yeah, is this, uh...
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
So, so Greg, is this, uh, is this something that we need to, to look at as far as a, a safety issue or?
Yes. And I'm not exactly sure where to go, who I speak with. But this is just a concern that the neighbors that I've spoken with in Speedway have had when they've, "Oh, you're the new committee woman. This is a concern we have. How do you plan to fix it?" So since this is my first opportunity to come in person to speak with the Township Supervisors, I wanted to let you know that the constituents in my neighborhood are concerned about speeding through Speedway and cutting through. A lot of the people that are cutting through the, the neighborhood don't live in the Speedway. They tend to cut down Sunny Mead, make the right onto Lemon Street and fly down and see how fast they can go from Sunny Mead down to Evergreen because there's no stop sign. And there's a lot of children that play on that street. There's a school bus stop there. The kids are going to be going back to school here in the next couple of weeks. And so we're going to have a lot more kids out at the bus stops. And it's just a big concern. Parents, one, one lady threw a shoe at a car that was driving by. That's not safe for the driver nor the, the, you know. But they're resorting because we've tried asking people, yelling at them as they speed down the street to please slow down, but no one's taking that into consideration. So I'm wondering if there's anything we can do as a Board of Supervisors to make it safer in our neighborhoods. I'm sure Speedway is not the only one that has people cutting through using excessive speed.
So, traffic calming is a, a common issue that, uh, that we discuss. Um, I, I think the best way to put it is this. Uh, it's not something, uh, we can discuss right now because it is a rather technical discussion. There's a lot of, uh, opportunities there. There's lots of, uh, different venues you could take. Um, when it comes to traffic calming, one of the complicating factors, you're talking about a, a road which is owned by Pendot. Uh, so while we have a good relationship with them, uh, we're not in control of that road. So I think the best thing to do is come in and have a meeting with us. We can talk over your concerns and see whether there's some signage issues that can be addressed, traffic signals, enforcement, uh, design issues. There's all kinds of things that can be utilized, uh, for traffic calming. So we have to have, uh, that conversation between you and myself and the staff and see what the issues are.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Just reach out to my office and we'll set something up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Tara Reichwein, 1279 Twin Cities Drive. I'd like to just have you guys keep in mind as you're spending money, making the parks look nice. Me and my volunteers, we're pretty much at Warner Park nine months out of the year, keeping the kids of our township super busy. Um, but now it's a concern of all of ours, um, as these winter months get closer that they do not have anything indoors that they can use to keep them busy, keep them out of trouble, to keep them out of the house possibly. Um, and especially with virtual schooling and the schools not allowing any extracurriculars. Just keep in mind, that's something we do need. We do need a rec center. We do need some place for these kids to go when there's nothing outdoors for them to do. And also, I'm very frustrated at the fact that, you know, some of our, our needs at Warner Park, Karen does a great job at putting Band-Aids on stuff for us. I really would appreciate maybe getting our bathrooms redone over there and changing out some electrical. Um, we're looking at trying to get a new scoreboard, painstakingly getting there for sponsorships to get a new scoreboard for our team. And, um, it's just, we're, we're having a hard time finding electrical because it's so old. So just please know that we have over 400 families that are there nine months out of the year. And we would appreciate support. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question before you go? How are you doing with the fundraiser for the scoreboard? I, I knew there was some progress, but I didn't hear any, haven't heard anything.
Yes, I, I appreciate your support with that. Yeah, we're only at about $2,000 right now and we need 11 grand for the one we need.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Yeah, we got, we got, we got to advertise that fundraiser somehow on the, uh, on the generator. Try to get to raise some money for this.
Yes.
Thanks for your effort.
Yes, thank you. I mean, it's slow, but we've been trying for the last three years to get businesses to sponsor, anybody to sponsor and help out. Um, you know, the scoreboard is probably as old as I am. And it really needs to be redone and, uh, little by little, we'll get there. We'll get there. But it takes time as anything does. And I know money is distributed all over and I get things need to be redone, but uh, Warner Park's one of the oldest parks and we do a really good job with my volunteers helping out, replacing things, donating items when they can. I just feel like, you know, everything else gets brand new and shiny, but Warner Park. I mean, our bathrooms are old as, as old as I am too. So, um, just consider that when you're spending the money and making things shiny again that we have lots of kids and lots of families that would really use it and really appreciate it.
I, I did some work in the score tower over there a couple of years ago, but that, that was, that was a mess then.
Yeah.
The ceiling was falling, the ceilings were falling in.
Correct, yes. And, and we did replace those. So, I mean, we do things to, you know, little by little contractors donate their time here and there, but when it comes down to it, pipes are old, things freeze. Um, you know, we used to have heaters in the bathrooms. We don't have heaters anymore. Um, there is just certain things that we can't control that, that the township needs to do for us. And I'm not a complainer. I usually try to get things done without complaining. But, um, you know, a little help and maybe a little money would be appreciated.
And what, well, I hear the drive all looks terrific in there anyway.
Thank you.
So that's a, that's a good idea that we should, uh, try to advertise that, try to get some sponsorship for you. Yeah, for that scoreboard, that's a really nice project. We got to get that over the top any way we can.
Yeah, it's, it's on our, uh, social media Facebook page. So if anybody wants to share it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
No further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's consent agenda is as follows. Item A is approval of the minutes from the September 17th meeting. Item B is Ange Choice N2, Extended Care Expansion. Release number one from the escrow in the amount of $223,459.29 as recommended by the engineer. Item C is 315 Newtown Court, release number eight final from escrow in the amount of $40,356.50 as recommended by the engineer. Item D, Rosemar Donuts, release number three from escrow in the amount of $95,012 as recommended by the engineer. Item E is Resolution 2020-30, which is the allocation of the foreign fire insurance taxes to the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association. This is an annual pass through. We do receive this revenue as mandated, uh, that it goes to the Relief Association of both of our volunteer fire companies. Item F is Resolution 2020-31 as authorizing the allocation of general municipal system aid between the police defined benefit plan and non-uniform defined benefit plan. This is our annual, uh, state aid that we receive for our pension plans and the resolution confirming the positive same in the appropriate funds. Item G is a three-year contract extension with Jenny King. They are our current vendor, uh, does our janitorial services. Uh, they are, uh, lowering their costs from what's currently in the contract. Uh, and they've been a, a pleasure to work with. Uh, and additionally, um, they worked with us throughout the COVID. They, they scaled back at times, reducing our costs. They did extra cleanings when necessary, uh, when we had, uh, possible closures. So they've been a, a pleasure to work with. So this would be a three-year extension at a lower cost than we're currently paying. And item H would be an LED project, a contract for Five Ponds Golf Club through a PICO program. This is exactly the same program which we did about a year ago for the library. Uh, this project would see a payback period of approximately 12 months. And that is tonight's consent agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Schuster. Any questions from the board? Okay, uh, uh, seeing none, we'll, uh, uh, motion to consider the, uh, approval of the consent agenda A through H.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
And that, there, Mr. Chairman, there are no email comments or comments in the meeting room.
Okay, so seeing no comments, uh, we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Okay, so we'll move along to the finance report. Uh, I believe that's Mary?
Yes, it is. Um, I'm, let's see. Make a motion to approve the transfers of the bill list for the period ending October 15th, 2020 for the supplemental bill list dated September 30th, 2020 in the amount of And the bill list stated October 15th, 2020 in the amount of for a total of $2,829,218.2.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any, any questions, comments? Any from the public?
No comments.
Okay, so we'll call a question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark? Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Okay, draft, uh, September financial statement. So you, uh, Greg?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the draft financial statement for September. If there's any questions, uh, a few things to point out. Uh, remarkably, our business and mercantile taxes are down only about 10%. So we have seen some rebounding there. Uh, there is, uh, some cyclical activity depending on how they, uh, file, whether it be quarterly or annual. Uh, so we do, uh, expect to see some variability with that number and also continued impacts into 2021. Uh, as you can see in the report, the earned income tax is very strong. Um, it's right where it should be under normal circumstances. Uh, however, as we've cautioned before, uh, we are unsure of the impact of the Sterling Act, uh, will have on that. We believe we would be, we are getting some additional revenues from people who are normally working in the city, uh, that are not paying that tax anymore. Some of that may have to be refunded in 2021. So, um, it, it's really going to be interesting to see how this plays out. So although it's strong, uh, we should not, uh, take that, uh, to the bank that, uh, we're past the, uh, economic issues. Um, real estate transfer tax, uh, is down about 35%. Uh, although, uh, we don't have it in this report. I'm told that October's numbers, uh, were, uh, fairly good. Uh, however, do not expect, uh, to meet our, uh, target for that, uh, that, that line item. Uh, but that's all I have on the draft financials. Uh, I'm happy to answer any question.
Uh, I just have one, Mr. Chairman. Your permission?
Certainly.
Um, have, have we completed the 19 audit yet, the 2019 audit?
So we're approximately, uh, as soon, as long as there's no other, uh, issues, we're approximately a week away from closing out the, a week away from closing out the 2019 numbers. All that gets put over to the auditor and then hopefully it'll be very shortly after that, that'll be.
Okay, so I haven't seen anything come across, so.
Good, thanks.
Okay, and I understand, uh, if I, if I'm correct, that, um, um, the real estate taxes are being, uh, there's only about, uh, uh, a little over 100, um, residents that have, uh, have not paid their taxes yet out of 10,000, over 10,000. And that's fantastic. And I thank the residents of Warmminster for being diligent with that. That, that's, that's quite a, that's quite an impressive number, especially right now in this climate. Okay. Uh, just, next up would be the, uh, consider the approval of Resolution 2020-32, the budget amendment number one.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as the board, uh, is aware, uh, you are allowed to amend the budget after the first three months of the year have passed by. Uh, doing budget amendments throughout the course of the year is, uh, relatively normal. Uh, it is a little unusual to do the first budget amendment this late in the year. Uh, however, with the pandemic and the financial issues, uh, things got pushed out quite a bit. So for this, uh, budget amendment, which is budget amendment number one, uh, you will see in the general fund, uh, the inclusion of both revenue and expenses for the paving that we did on behalf of the municipal authority. You'll also see a transfer into the line item for engineering services, uh, and other small items, uh, all of which is budget neutral. Uh, and in the library fund, uh, you will see, uh, a transfer between two line items on the expenditure side to cover the cost of unemployment insurance for when some of those employees, uh, were, were, uh, uh, for the park and rec fund, uh, there's a minor line item transfer, uh, for investment rental. In the golf fund, there are various minor adjustments which are all budget neutral. And in the capital fund, uh, there is revenue and expenses for the Green Light Go Grant, which are offsetting, uh, and also inclusion for revenue for a grant which is still outstanding for DEP, um, for the electric vehicle station that we have at Warmminster Community Park.
Okay, so, uh, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-32?
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any, uh, any questions or comments? Uh, any from the public?
There are no, uh, email comments or anyone at the podium.
Okay, so we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark? Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Okay, unfinished business. Uh, consider the award of 2021 to 2023 mowing and turf, RFP.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this was authorized to go out to bid. Um, this is a three-year contract. Uh, we are recommending that for the mowing portion, uh, the low bidder, which is our current vendor, be awarded that bid. Uh, however, for the turf portion, uh, we are recommending that that go to actually the third lowest bidder. The first two lowest bidders being disqualified, uh, for various reasons. Uh, the numbers are all laid out in the recommendation and, uh, we're happy to answer any of your questions, uh, either myself or with Karen Whit.
Uh, is there, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any, any questions? Any questions from the public?
No, Mr. Chairman. No questions via email or at the podium.
Okay, so being no que, no comments, we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Karen.
So now we move on to new business. And we'll look at our two thousand and twenty manager proposed budget presentation. I'll turn the floor over to you, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you can get the presentation up. All right, thank you. As you can, whoops. Wait a second here. I had a problem earlier, man, to try putting it up in reader view.
I see a big blank screen, big gray screen.
And with that, I'd like a motion to adopt the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Okay, you can see if we can just go to the first slide. All right, twenty, so two thousand and twenty-one budget. So first off, it'd be, you know, I, I, the first thing I want to talk about is obviously we're heading in a new direction. The previous direction through the budgets which I presented in the past was really to move towards selling the sewer and water systems for a significant amount of money. And of course, now this has all been talked about in the past. There was quite a few benefits for that and also some risks. The benefits of being, you can be able to appropriately fund the pension plans with a realistic rate of return, establishing funded OPEB trust and utilize interest from the meeting funds annually to fund our operations. Or a couple of risks, though. Obviously, there's the permanent loss of those assets. Once you sell them, they are gone forever. Additionally, depending on who the assets were sold to and the structure of the deal, there could be an increase and could be potentially an increase in utility fees depending on. So that was the previous direction. So looking at the new direction that the board, the board has chosen, number one, it does preclude the sale of assets and uses multiple efforts to stabilize finances. If I were to use a baseball analogy, the previous direction was really trying to hit a home run and solve our issues. Whereas the strategy that's being taken right now is singles and doubles to drive runs in over time. So the first part of that was the sale of the stormwater system to the municipal authority. And that does include a permanent elimination of the general fund expense for those activities and of course, an immediate short-term influx of six million dollars. The second part is what was talked about early this evening and what the board authorized moving forward on to investigate and prepare documents was the pension obligation bond. That would be an issuance of the bond to significantly pay down the unfunded pension liability while also adjusting to that realistic rate of return, specifically six point seven five percent. Now, while these have an immediate and very positive impact on our finances, there are still some future issues that the board should be aware of and should start preparing for that they're going to have to deal with. The first is the issue of paid firefighters. We know that we're bringing on five paid firefighters in two thousand and twenty-one. It's going to be paid for initially by the SAFER grant and also be supplemented by the mill rate in the fire fund. However, we know that in approximately four years, both the SAFER grant and the funds that have been built up in there will be gone. And there's going to have to be a contribution that comes over from the general fund that will be significant. So not something that's hitting today, but something that we need to be aware of and be prepared for in approximately four years. The second thing is an MMO increase. I have constructed things under the assumption that we are going to issue a pension obligation bond. The way the pension obligation bond works is that the unfunded liability, the cost will be amortized over time and we will gain a significant advantage in the first three years. So our MMO will be much lower in the first three years. But after three years, we do anticipate that being a significant jump. And that has to do with the amortization and how that works out with the pension obligation bond. So in three years, that's something that will have to be dealt with. The next future issue is OPEB, other post-employment benefits, specifically post-retirement healthcare. Right now, we have a number of employees who are due to retire or will be retired or scheduled or eligible to retire over the next five or so years. Right now, we can estimate and say that our current OPEB cost annually is around three hundred thousand dollars. But we should be prepared for that over the next five years to really balloon up depending on when people retire. So that is another future issue. And the last issue I'll, I'll point out, I know the board is aware of this, is we do have mill rate caps that come into play. On the general fund, we have a mill rate cap of fourteen mils, which we're already at. We can go for an additional five mils, but that's only with court approval. Additionally, the fire fund has a three-mil cap on it and of that three mils, only one mil can be used for salary and benefits. So those constraints really impact us and our ability to go ahead and pay for operations. Next slide, please. So when I put together a budget, I look at specific goals and I try to hit every single one of those goals. I don't always achieve everything in every budget, but these are the six goals that I laid out when looking at the next year's budget. Number one is we want to stabilize all funds. Aside that, we want to get away from the practice of dipping into fund balance and making sure each fund can stand on its own. Second is reduce pressure on the general fund. The general fund is the fund which we're having our most issues. It's where all the pension costs come out of. It's where we fund the majority of our operations. So we want to reduce pressure as much as possible off of that fund. The third was provide for the hiring of those five firefighters and improve workday coverage. This is a public safety initiative, one which is sorely needed. And we've been working very well with fire companies internally to make sure that this goes smoothly for two thousand and twenty-one. The fourth is the completion of the Warminster Community Park project, which you approved all those issues earlier this evening. Likewise, with number five is to complete the acquisition and cleanup of Shannon Doyle Woods. And six would be significantly reduce the unfunded pension liability while switching to a realistic assumed rate of return utilizing market value. Next slide, please. So just going into the highlights of each fund. I, I'm not going to go into a line-by-line explanation. You all have the budget. I'm happy to answer any questions, whether at the meeting or come in and talk to us. And with the Park has whatever you require, whatever information you need, we're happy to go ahead and have those discussions. So the general fund first and foremost, there is no tax increase proposed. Again, it's at fourteen mils, can go up to nineteen mils with court approval. But at the moment, it is at fourteen mils and no tax increase is proposed. Some big changes on the revenue side. We are projecting an approximate one million dollar loss in act five-eleven taxes due to the pandemic. This is earned income tax, business privilege, mercantile, local services tax, real estate transfer tax, all of these, we are projecting a million dollar loss in two thousand and twenty-one, which is having a significant impact on the budget, of course. We are also seeing a reduction in permit fees. I think we can say that some of that is due to the pandemic. However, we've been on a downturn for a year or two now as the amount of activity and work that's been going on in Warminster has been steadily decreasing. A lot of the big projects have come to an end. And although we do have some big projects out there, just overall, we are seeing a decline. So I would expect that to continue into two thousand and twenty-one. Of course, we will be receiving six million dollars from the sale of the stormwater system. Whether we receive that this year or early next year, as yet to be seen. But that will go into the general fund to build up our fund balance. And lastly, in terms of revenue, all of the pilot money is going to be diverted to the general fund. Pilot is payment in lieu of taxes. Some of the continuing care facilities that are in Warminster do have agreements with the township as well as the county and our school board about paying taxes. So they do these pilot agreements in which they don't pay taxes, but they pay a payment in lieu of the taxes. Historically, we have, when we received these payments, divided them up just as if they were tax dollars. We thought that was the most appropriate way and is a very sound way of doing things. However, it's not a requirement that we do with them. So we're taking those funds that are coming into anything other than the general fund and redirecting them back into the general fund. So that's a high-level view of our revenues. On the expenditures, operations will be mostly unchanged. We recognize in the middle of the pandemic and the financial situation we found ourselves in, this is not the time to be making significant changes. We do want to provide a good level of service to the residents. We have a phenomenal team here that's just been doing a great job for the community and we want to make sure we keep all of that intact. There is one position which is being eliminated or proposed to be eliminated in the budget and that is a police officer position which is currently vacant. So we are not talking about laying anyone off. This is a currently vacant position. If you move forward with the pension obligation bond, you will see a significant reduction in the pension costs, which is of course why you're doing the pension obligation. There will still, still be costs there and those costs will fluctuate over time. And again, we do anticipate in three years, we will see a jump in the MMO when the amortization of some of these benefits runs out. Another expenditure that's in the proposed budget is a two million dollar tax anticipation note or TAN. This is a short-term borrowing to make sure that we have funds for our operations. I do not believe this will actually be necessary. That really depends on the timing of the payment from the municipal authority. However, this is kind of a belt and suspenders approach. By putting it in the budget, it allows us to do or to issue a TAN if we feel it's necessary. So I would encourage the board to leave that in there, even though I don't think. The next change when it comes to general fund expenditures is that all of the fire and emergency management revenue and expenses have been moved over to the fire fund. We do think that is the appropriate place for all of those things. So it's categorized under one single group. And lastly, it says awaiting health insurance renewal. We actually just received it a few hours ago. We have to look at it and analyze it, so I don't have any information on it here. Once we analyze it and get the information, we anticipate that it will, of course, change the numbers. Just so the board knows, when we build these budgets, I put in a ten percent increase in all of our insurance costs until we get the actual renewal in. I do that simply because we get changes. I prefer the budget improve and not get worse. So I do anticipate those numbers getting better as we look at the health insurance renewal. So at the end of the day, when you look at the revenues and expenditures and everything that's going on, you will see a deficit of approximately five hundred thousand dollars. Now, that deficit is covered by the proceeds from the stormwater sale. There's also a possibility of better act five-eleven taxes. As I said earlier, we're going to be projecting about a million dollars in losses there. If that does come in stronger, that will go ahead and erode that deficit. Also, the township staff, we all know what's going on and we consistently come in under budget in many areas. So we're going to try to make sure that this deficit doesn't come to a reality. So that is the general fund. Next slide, please. Going through the other funds, ambulance fund, there's really no change other than the fact that we are transferring pilot money from that fund over to the general fund. Same thing with the fire fund. You have that transfer. As I said earlier, all fire and emergency services revenue costs will be going into fire fund. We'll be hiring five firefighters in the first quarter with the SAFER grant. The mileage would increase by one point four three mils to a total of two point nine three mils. This is to cover those additional services that are going in there. It's also to help build up some fund balance which can be expended in the future on the salaries and benefits for those five fired, five firefighters. So we can extend that three-year period out a little bit longer, about four years, where we don't, don't have to transfer anything over to the general fund to subsidize those five firefighters. Over in the library fund, again, the transfer of the pilot funds is occurring. We are seeing a reduction in state aid due to the pandemic. We do not know how long this is going to occur for, but it is something that we have to do with this budget. This is causing a structural deficit that's covered by the fund balance in the library fund for two thousand and twenty-one. We do want to get away from putting structural deficits into the budget. However, when we looked at this, we really don't know what's going to happen with the library fund. There's a possibility that we would be allowed to not spend as much of our collections. There's a possibility that the state aid would rebound. So there's lots of different things that could happen. So our recommendation is to cover the structural deficit with fund ba, with the library fund fund balance for two thousand and twenty-one and then evaluate for two thousand and twenty-two. When we get to two thousand and twenty-two, there should not be a structural deficit. It should be fixed either by increases in revenues or decreases in expenditures. You can adjust the mill rate, change things around. But no action for two thousand and twenty-one, but definitely fix it in two thousand and twenty-two. Next slide, please. A park and rec fund, really no major changes there other than the transfer of pilot. The sanitation fund, which is really a trash fund. We are charging twenty percent of the administrative coordinator's salary to that fund due to the amount of time that she is spending on trash-related issues. Over in the golf fund, we are projecting or planning for a fee increase in looking at the activity at the golf course, which once they reopened, say we're allowed to reopen, has just been wall-to-wall packed. You can't even get a tee time over there. So we'd be increasing the fees over there. That's also taking into account that area golf courses have already, in the process of closing. And they are projecting a profit in two thousand and twenty-one. However, everyone knows that the golf business is really weather-dependent. So you do see quite a few, quite a lot of variability there. And of course, the, whatever's going on with the pandemic does have a heavy impact on our food and beverage and events here. The debt service fund, we would see a transfer of pilot over to the general fund. This is probably the biggest area of change. Right now, the mileage increase would be five point three one mils to a total of seven point three three mils. That five point three one mils would fund the pension obligation bond, the Warminster Community Park project and the Shannon, Shannon Doyle Woods acquisition. Most of the funds that were mostly increased that was put in for this year does cover the Warminster Community Park project. There's just a little bit more that has to get put in based on the numbers. So there's a majority of it is really going to the pension obligation bond. And there is some more there for the Shannon Doyle Woods acquisition. Obviously, that's a big jump in the mill rate on the debt service fund. But that would be the estimated cost as we sit right now, the pension obligation. Obviously, we won't know the final numbers until the bonds are issued, but you'd have to set the mill rate for two thousand and twenty-one by the end of this year. So we couldn't wait until the bond is actually issued. Of course, once the bond is issued and you see the actual numbers, you could readjust the mill rate for the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Next slide, please. In the capital fund, the two biggest items in there, probably the police cruisers, which we have skipped for two we have skipped for 2020 we try not to skip those and get behind so this included for the 2021 budget and also the warmest or community park project although it is grant funded and paid for at a debt service all that flows through the capital fund so that's budget accordingly traffic fund is really a revolving fund there's no real changes there we use that fund to pay for numerous traffic control devices that get struck around the township there all times getting pedestrian poles signs traffic signals traffic boxes which are incredibly expensive so that's all replaced out of this fund and the revenue that we get for insurance whether it be our own insurance or whether it be the individual who caused the accidents insurance flows into that traffic fund to offset that and then finally on the liquid fuels fund we are seeing a reduction in state aid the liquid fuels fund is derived from the amount of gas that is sold or fuels that are sold and with the pandemic there has been the overall decrease with the amount of travel that's occurred so we are seeing a reduction in state aid nonetheless we are in a situation where last year forecasting for this year and in the 2021 budget we have a surplus for that fund so we are kind of you know normally around this time we'd be purchasing a dump truck we decided to hold off on that however depending on how the surplus goes and a lot of that could be dependent on the winter we have a decent surplus there specifically because if you remember last winter there was barely any snow events at all so we didn't think of spending funds there but depending on how things go with this winter we may have the appropriate amount of funds to purchase that dump truck out of next slide please so as I started the presentation I talked about goals and here are the ways the budget does address those goals so stabilize all funds as I said the general and library funds are still in deficit I believe in the the library fund that's a short term issue which will be corrected over the next year so as a general general fund we do have fund balance once we get the proceeds in from the sale of the stormwater system to cover any deficit additionally we are going to do everything possible to try and make sure that there is no deficit as at all so we are well on our way to stabilizing the general fund however don't forget those longer term issues which I pointed out at the beginning those are things that over time over the next two three four years will begin to destabilize that fund and action's going to be needed taken to make sure that doesn't occur the goal of reducing pressure on the general fund the stormwater transfer and sale is complete so we have the money in as well as got rid of the operation expenditure for that all the pilot funds are now being directed to the general funds and we will see that MMO decrease because of the pension obligation third goal providing for hiring the five firefighters to approve the work have received the safer grant and the proposed adjustment village is in the budget completion of warm Mr. Community Park project the bids were awarded earlier this evening and you have also awarded the financing the millage is in there to be adjusted for that project acquisition of Shannon Dole Woods same thing you authorized settlement with all this evening will be moving forward on the closing and the financing has been put in place the millage in the debt service fund would be adjusted accordingly and lastly would be significantly reduce the unfunded pension liability while switching to a realistic assumed rate of return that would be done through the pension obligation bond scheduled for 2021 with the adjusted millage rates every time you put together a budget there are things you want to do things you have to do then you get to the things you can afford this budget I think marries all of those options and if you look it solves a lot of the or moves forward on a lot of the initiatives that have been out there it adds a lot of benefit to the community with this budget you are hiring five firefighters and immensely increasing safety of township you are improving warmest or community park and adding quite a few features on there that the community will enjoy you are acquiring Shannon Dole Woods cleaning it up and making it an available open space for the public we're taking measures to stabilize the general fund and significantly reduce the unfunded pension liability of course there's a cost for all of this and it's borne out of the adjusted millage rate but when you look at the overall value that the community is getting it's a it is something which many times you present a budget with an increase just to keep what you already have this is not one of those budgets it's a it's a moving forward yes there is a mill rate increase but there is significant amount of value attached to that next slide please so as far as the next steps this is the proposed budget from myself that I am recommending we will refine numbers as they come in specifically the health insurance renewal at this point it becomes your budget and yours to direct however you see fit timeline for adoption is that we would have the meeting on November 5th in which case you would advertise the proposed budget by the second class township code it must be advertised for 20 days and then you would do a final adoption on December 3rd if the board would like additional meetings certainly add them in there just keep please keep mindful of 20 day advertising period once the budget is advertised there is some restrictions on what can be done to the proposed budget generally decreasing line items is not an issue however increasing line items can be an issue and there are caps in place where if you increase at a certain amount that you'd have to go ahead and re-advertise the budget so before I conclude just want to thank first of all all the staff and department heads putting together the annual budget is a large larger project although the department has poured through everything they've done through the year they've seen what they would need to change in their operations what's going to cost more what's going to cost less and putting the best numbers that they possibly can we have meetings we go over all the proposals refine the numbers and they've just done a phenomenal job putting this all together of course I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Catherine McGovern who really is the one whole the glue holding the budget together she's the one that puts all the numbers together make sure it all adds up and everything is running smoothly so a big shout out to her and all the work that she does with that I'm happy to answer any questions you can of course ask questions now if you have very specific questions I would encourage you to you know come in and meet with me and the staff and the appropriate department head and we can get to whatever level of detail you feel is appropriate
first of all I'd like to thank you Catherine for doing a phenomenal job Greg great presentation we all are aware that we're in uncertain times here our revenues are down pandemic costs across the board what would it take Greg to put together some cost reductions in the budget so we're not at a deficit I I've been looking at this and just thinking about it and and not to just you know very better talk about it because you know we have to come to some kind of agreement here moving forward but I'm just wondering what it would take or to do that or would you need some time to look into it to see if that's a possibility
so to erase and I'm assuming you're talking about the general fund to erase a $500,000 deficit we look at two areas revenue and expenses every day we're getting new and new revenue information so we can take another look at that and perhaps there's some revenue line items that could be increased secondly on the expenditure side I would first look to the health insurance renewal which again we just received and we need to analyze and see if there are any potential savings there I mean I believe there will be I just don't know how much so if if there are ways to do it with those two items then it's really not not that much of a stretch if we can't do it with those two items then you have to talk about reducing services and cutbacks in other areas I don't have anything prepared right now I would like a few days to go over the the health insurance renewal and perhaps if the board wants to see that option a balanced which would be you know essentially a general fund balanced budget I can certainly give you my recommendation for
I really I really appreciate that I'm not sure how my fellow board members feel about it but it was just something I thought we should look at if we could possibly do it
yes I would agree if we if we can present a balanced budget as required by second township or second class township code if there are ways if there are ways we can squeeze some more water out of the rock without a significant reduction in services I think that we should have a look because this has been the problem here for for this is how we got into the pickle we're in and and we don't want to continue down that path of deficit spending so yeah we'll have a look Greg I mean this is I understand this is this is your proposed budget and it's well done but you know we'll have to have a look at some of our options
I agree so we'll know that at least we'll know what we're talking about about what possibilities there are and what we can't the residents are asking us to spend less they've said that several times so as we go along with all these projects we're trying to fix a budget that we were handed I mean a problem that we handed and I think that the more we can do to spend less the better off will be if we can
well if that's the board's consensus then we will go ahead and put together a budget which which does not dip into any fund balance for the revenues and expenditures are equal on the general fund
I'm sorry Judy go ahead
no I was just saying we could see what at least see what it looks like
yes we have we have a month to to really work hard and work these numbers and and that's exactly what we'll do I mean I know yourself Catherine Mary and myself have been meeting weekly you know to go over all this stuff so I'm pretty in tune with it and we'll see you know we'll see what else we can we can do and hopefully we can come up with a balanced budget in the general fund
thank you and also also again I want to thank you Greg for an excellent presentation and and I liked that you talked about the new direction and how we're moving forward I just feel like it would be a good idea just to look into it to see if there was some way we could do it and thank you
thank you
any other comments okay well thanks everyone and again I know that there's been a lot of work put into this and and you've all done a great job staff and yourself Greg and you know we're looking forward to continue to work on the budget and there are some some outlying issues that you know in the next five four five years out that we definitely have to plan for you know and manage those those issues those risks and I'm sure we can we can I'm sure we can work it out the new direction I'm pretty happy with where we're going in stabilizing in stabilizing our our financial situation
Mr. Chairman I don't know if you want to entertain public comment right now you're not technically required to because you're not taking any action but I do have one email which I could read now or wait to the other public comment session
let's wait till the next public comment session let's move on we'll go to professional reports Mr. Schuster
thank you Mr. Chairman I have my written report in case there's any questions I will just two quick notes we're all watching what's going on with the pandemic we are seeing a resurgence of all resurgence so we keep encouraging people to wear their masks practice social distancing and all the other precautions which are out there I will say that although we did talk about the fall resurgence and we see numbers coming up that we're in a very different place than we were when the pandemic first started at that point there really wasn't a full understanding of what was going on they didn't have the facilities enough adequate facilities enough adequate medical equipment to deal with the situation but that a lot of that has changed we're in a far better position now than we were at the start of the pandemic but we still need to be mindful follow the precautions and hopefully a vaccine will be out soon and we can get past this as soon as possible along with that I'll mention that on election day both the administration side of the township building and the library are both whole locations accordingly employees will be work in those specific locations will be working from home so as to avoid any exposure so just keep that in mind for any township business you can contact us through other means phone internet but physically on election day we will not be at the administration side of the township building or library being open lease will be unaffected MNI and that's all Mr. Chairman
thank you solicitors report Mr. Halbert
yes thank you Mr. Chair you have in front of you a report from last month September 2020 to add to as well with regards to the election that with the changes in the law this year the deadline for registration has been moved closer and moved up so there's actually more time to register the deadline to register for the election to register to vote is this Monday October 19th so there's still time to register you can do that with the you can go to the web address that the chair announced earlier in the meeting or you can go to votespa.com additionally there's additional options of voting with regards to in person and mail in voting you can request the mail in ballot up through I believe it's October 27th again all that information can be found on the county website that was announced earlier in the meeting tonight so thank you
thank you Scott and someone who's been relatively quiet all evening Mr. Kenner
I think it's a record Mr. Chairman over three hours I haven't spoken yet
is he still here
it's definitely a record thank you Mr. Chairman you have our October engineers report the only comment I have is and I think most of the board and some residents are happy to hear the Nifty 50s restaurant estimated their land development plans we're currently reviewing them planning commission should see them in November and then the board will see them in probably December I just want to make a note it's actually an amended final plan there were plans already approved for that site for retail pad site it was not a Nifty 50s at that time a few years ago with the AAA expansion at the Worcester Plaza Shopping Center so this should be hopefully pretty simple quick reviews and Nifty 50s again will be will be the new user for that retail pad site in front of the Worcester Plaza Shopping Center outside that I have no other comments and I'll entertain any
okay I have none any questions for Craig okay thank you Craig appreciate it all right where are we oh managers announcements
thank you Mr. Chairman first of all we are returning to the format of having the first the meeting on the first Thursday and having the third Thursday being the optional meeting so that means the next meeting would be November 5th the only two items that I have right now for that meeting would be further discussion and possible action on that pension obligation bond and of course the 2021 budget
okay I'm sure there's no objections to that or is there okay thank you now our second round of public comment
Mr. Chairman going to email first I have one email from Joy Deposey 530 Penrose Lane Mr. Chairman, going to email first, I have one email from Joy Caposey, 530 Penrose Lane. It infuriates me that the new board has chosen to do a 360 on the budget as it had been configured for 2020 and now 2021. Last December, the proposed budget for 2020 included the sale of the municipal authority and possibly the sewer system. There were plenty of opinions in both directions. Those of us who attended the public meeting and representatives of the water authorities expressing interest in purchasing the Warmminster Municipal Authority were present gained a lot of insight. The sale of the WMA would not only gain the township millions of needed dollars, it would also decrease by approximately 50% the cost of water to the residents. It would also assure that Warmminster would continue to receive clean water in the future. We all know that our individual water costs have doubled. There is an option to rectify this by selling the WMA. I do not think it's fair to preclude the sale of the WMA as part of the budget. That is the only email comment I have. Are there any at the podium? And I'm told there are no comments at the podium.
Okay. Supervisor's comments. Who would like to go first?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, because I only have 4% battery left.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind, I would appreciate it. I, I just real quick, I want to wish everyone a very happy, healthy and safe Halloween. I'm hoping to see some kids get out and, and take all the precautions necessary. I normally have a full squad on my front lawn over on Revere Terrace for Halloween. Everyone's welcome to join us, permitted, provided you wear your mask. And let's hope for a good one. Other than that, that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Kathy, would you like to go next?
Also want to wish everyone a happy and a safe Halloween. And it was recommended, I heard a doctor with infectious diseases was talking about Halloween and how you can do it safely for children. Basically said, if you do individual snack bag things or some individual bags where the kids don't have to be taking the candy out of the same bowl if you leave it outside or if you're going to see the kids. So it might be an idea, you know, to do individual little bags for the kids. So they're not all grabbing at the same candy. So that was just a suggestion, but everybody have a safe and happy Halloween. Thank you.
Okay, Mary.
I just want to remind everybody that daylight savings time will be coming to an end on November 1st. Please remember to change your smoke detector and your carbon monoxide detector batteries. Thank you.
Yes, and be prepared for the, the long, dark hours. So, okay, thanks, Mary. Judy?
Oh, I just wanted to say happy Halloween again and, and stay safe. The kids are starting back in Centennial School District next week. The elementary school kids go first and then the, the middle school kids are going on November 9th. Hope that they all stay safe, obey the rules on the bus, obey the safe distancing and the mask-wearing. It's hard for children. Parents, please instruct your childrens how to behave, especially on the bus rides and as they're going back to school. Also, the census, the White House has decided to close the census early by the end of October. And this is going to affect representation all over the state and in Bucks County and it'll affect funding for different townships. If you haven't completed your census, please get on your computer or go to the post office and get a form and do it now. Thank you. And thank you all for staying in this room.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I forgot one item that I meant to mention earlier. I just want to jump on what Judy had to say with the schools opening back up. I want to thank our friend Joe Cowie over at ShopRite. He's been putting Clorox wipes aside for the teachers over at McDonald Elementary so they can use them in their classrooms. So I just want, I meant to do that at the beginning of the meeting, but thank you, Joe, for doing that.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to address, there was a comment or a question about, I know we're going to have three districts now voting at McDonald Elementary School. And I believe that they are going to be in the hallway. So to the question that are we going to be able to accommodate everyone? I mean, I've been over there for quite some time and I, I think we will. I, I don't see it as a big problem. I, I think if everyone behaves, goes in, casts their vote and goes home, it should be not a problem at all. We should be able to accommodate everybody smoothly. So thank you for that question. Okay, so everyone be safe. We'll see you, you know, out and about in the township. And again, I'll see everyone here November 5th. And if anyone has any questions, wants to reach out to me about what Mary and I and Greg and Catherine have been doing with the budget and the questions, feel free to reach out to me at any time. So with that, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you.